Good morning, half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, May 12, and the time now is 9:32. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Tuesday, April 7, and then on Friday, May 7. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 121-36-COR, introduced by myself and co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, an act to add a new chapter, 83, to Title 12, Division 5, Guam Code Anted, relative to the Finance, Design, Construction and Maintenance of Governor Guam's 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence, and shall be called the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence Construction Act of 2021. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning. We begin with Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes to my right. We have Senator Tony Adda to my left. We have Senator Jim Moylan, Minority Leader Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Telo Tidaway. The public hearings' rules of engagement are those testifying on behalf of 121-36-COR will be recognized and invited to the panel. We have invited Mr. Sid Fried Lenzangan. He's the first to testify, and then he'll be followed by the GIDEA folks, GMH, and more than likely Public Health and everyone else. I'd like to also recognize our colleague Senator Joanne Brown has also joined us. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff. We have written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Individuals will be allowed to present all testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions and for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Testimony and questions shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this rule will result in their move from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from providing all testimony and will be asked to leave or be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure the microphone is on, that you're speaking to the microphone. Please state your name and title for the record. We will now begin to discuss Bill 121-36. And I'd like to give my opening on the bill. Buenas and half a day, colleagues, and to everyone who's joining us this morning to discuss Bill 121-36-COR, which is an act to add a new chapter, 83, to Title 12, Division 5, Guam Code Anted, relative to the Finance, Design, Construction and Maintenance of Governor Guam's 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence, and shall be called the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence Construction Act of 2021. It has been a long time coming for our island healthcare agencies to have new structurally safe facilities. The assessment done by you, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and the Guam Fire Department proves that the physical structures are showing stages of failure, which are creating greater liability for the government. The GMH Guam Memorial Hospital structure has been up for more than five decades. The failing structure is being stretched to maintain operation, which is risking their credit status and Medicare and Medicaid provider eligibility. The main facility of public health and social services was built more than 40 years ago and has not been occupied due to fire damage caused by the buildings, ODEs, allowing public health and public welfare offices to be scattered around the island and commercial buildings to provide services to people of Guam. These services should be housed permanently in one facility to prevent any issues for the people Guam accessing the services provided by public health. The Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is outgrowing their facility as more consumers are seeking their services. They need a larger facility as their current facility is struggling to support the increase in patients as Guam population grows. Our island is growing, and our healthcare facilities must have the capacity to provide quality care for a growing population. The structural issues of our healthcare agencies should be addressed promptly. We should not wait any longer to provide our people the healthcare facilities they need, improved, modern, and safe for all. Bill 121-36-COR will mandate the construction of the 21st Century Healthcare of Excellence, which will stand a healthcare campus that will house all three Governor Guam healthcare agencies such as Guam Memorial Hospital, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. The bill will do more than building the healthcare facility, but it will also provide the healthcare agency with modern technology that will give our island community and the migration region a state-of-the-art facility. We have consulted the heads of Governor Guam healthcare agencies regarding this legislation, and they are all in support of it. Bill 121 will ensure that funding for the construction and maintenance of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence, I hope my colleagues will support this legislation as the people of Guam deserve proper and safe healthcare facility that will provide quality care. I want to thank all the dedicated employees of GMH, Department of Public Health, and Guam Behavioral for continuing to serve our island and our people while in such environments and for risking their lives mostly during this COVID-19 pandemic. We are thankful for each and every one of you. Sisus Massey. We will now begin with Mr. Sid Fried Lenzangan for your testimony. Sir?
Sorry. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and to all senators. I do not support this bill because I believe this is not the right time. Second, the $300 million from the American Rescue Act plan will be diverted to build the hospital. It is very clear that it is a violation of the Rescue Act funding because the American Rescue Act Plan Act was enacted to help the state, the counties, territories, to cover increased expenditures, replenish lost revenues, and mitigate economic impact from coronavirus pandemic. Now, show me the section in the American Rescue Act Plan and publish it that you can divert $300 million to build this hospital. There's nothing. It only specified enhanced healthcare services. What it means is you allow access or healthcare access to people that are uninsured or lost their insurance because of the pandemic. If you split the almost $600 million to half, then you cannot carry out the objectives or the guidance in the American Rescue Plan Act. This is not American Build Plan Act, but Rescue Plan Act. That's why it is called Rescue. And the second reason why I oppose this because just like what I said, this is not the right time. We have a lot of lost revenue, especially from tax revenue from tourism, which generates $250 million tax revenue. Now it's gone. How would you pay the monthly and the interest for this almost $1 billion medical or health facility, which includes the hospital, the public health, and the behavioral science? We don't have the funds because the bill also specified that you will get the $35 million from the earned income tax to pay the contractor, but it's only for the fiscal year 2022. We need to understand that we will not recover right away the lost revenue, maybe for almost five years. So therefore, if you will continue with this bill or with this funding of big buildings, then you will compromise the budget for many agencies. You will compromise the jobs of the government workers because we cannot afford it. The only reason why we are surviving because of the so many federal funding that we receive from the U.S., almost $1.8 billion. That's the only reason. Aside from that, we're finished. So where we gonna get the funding to pay the contractor? Just the interest of this $700 million alone is almost $42 million a year, almost $4 million a month that we have to pay for this building. And then it should be construed also as adept for the government of Guam. And we have exceeded that limit because the funding that will be used to pay this building will be coming from the general fund. You know, you might say it's not, but it is. Now, again, the American Rescue Act funding expenses incurred will be up to 2024 only. In case you insist or support this bill, then we'll be beyond that. You will spend $300 million right away. Then you're gonna have a problem with complying with the guidance. But the main argument here is even you invert the way the guidance is written, there's no such thing as you can use it to build a new hospital. If you want a new hospital, you need to wait till you get back all the lost revenue from tourism because tourism accounts to 1.5 billion sales revenue, and it accounts to 2.5 billion, including the businesses that is connected with tourism. Not the right time, Mr. Chairman. Even the intention of the bill is good, is great. It's not the right time, especially the Army Corps that have specified in your bill that it only needs $21 million to rehabilitate the hospital to be accredited. Only $21 million, and that's under the guidance of the Rescue Plan Act. So why will you spend right away the $300 million and divert it to a new building? The main priority here is our people. Time and time again, the hospital have bestowed, and it might even outlive all of us because concrete building longevity is up to 100 years. In 1956, our first hospital is at the Oka Point. Then we bought the one where it's located now from the dioceses because they have a problem with financing. So it's not even almost 60 years old, just like the public health. It's only 47 years old. And then you transfer all the people to buildings that are older than public health, just like EITC. It's older than public health. If there's a problem with electrical, then fix it because the American Rescue Act funding will cover all the deferred maintenance to all the buildings. Well, but it's your choice. You're the one in power. You just have to answer to the people once you start terminating or underappropriating the agency, terminating jobs, because this will really hurt the general fund. It's just a matter of time, maybe five years. Then we can go back to our feet. We can recover all the lost revenue from tourism because no matter what you say, even you diversify, this pandemic will hurt all those diversification. Tourism is our main industry. And just to repeat, Mr. Chairman, it's about the guidance in Rescue Act funding. And this is not in compliance with the American Rescue Plan because this is not American build. If you want new hospital, then get a grant from the U.S. government and justify it. And then get requests for more increase for the American Rescue Plan Act because our neighbor Saipan is getting, the Northern Mariana is getting almost like $500 million also, and we're getting almost the same. And we have 103 times more than their, 5 times more than their population. Not something to think about. That's why I do not support this bill, Mr. Chairman, because it will compromise a lot of areas, especially the government financing because after the $300 million, all the money will be coming from the general fund, which we do not have, which we do not have, do not have the revenue yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, if I can leave now?
Stand by and I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they want to ask you any questions. I'll begin with Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes. If you want to ask any of the questions, and I'll ask all my colleagues to ask you questions.
Manana Sisus, Mr. Chair, thank you for giving me an opportunity to share a comment or a question to the presenter of the testimony this morning. Good morning, Mr. Lenzangan. Thank you for being here this morning. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make just a couple of comments in reference to where the funding source is coming from. This funding source, Mr. Sid Fried, will definitely not come from the ARP. The American Rescue Plan does not allow for Guam to utilize any funds from the ARP. This fund will be taken from what the recent Act of Congress has done, which because of their recent legislation, the EITC, the Earned Income Tax Credit, Guam will see a $65 million or more that GovGuam can appropriate. So what the good author and I did do is this bill will take $35 million on the initial stage out of the $65 million as an initial payment for the building of the facilities. Then each year, it will appropriate $35 million for a total of 29 years. I will note, Mr. Chair, that reading from the fiscal note and the comments that come from some of the government entities, GIDEA had noted that based on the recent trends, there is interest-to-market projects of this nature, which has the potential for competitive rates. One of the benefits of the leaseback model is that most, if not all, of the capital, maintenance, and repair requirements are covered by the contractor, although the leaseback models does not often include additional costs for these maintenance and repair services. These costs, in the end, ensure the viability and the usefulness of the facility, of the life of the leaseback period and beyond. Yes, Mr. Chair, it was noted by GIDEA that they did have concerns if GIDEA wasn't given an appropriation. And I know that based on the fiscal note that the executive director, Mr. Steve Guerrero, had noted that has been submitted to the record that there will be resources provided to GIDEA to facilitate this program moving forward. So, Mr. Lenzangan, just to make sure that it's noted and to the listening audience that we will not take from the American Rescue Plan and based on what Congress has done recently, Guam doesn't have to pay out for the EITC, the $65 million per year, and that's where the funding source will come on. This also will not affect the GovGuam's budget ceiling. So that is where the train of thought that we are working with. And other components to that will be assisting inclusive of making sure that we have the fiscal, the IT system in place that is required by the federal government in order for the services to be provided. So I want to share this as an update to you and make sure that clarification is there and that the ARP funds will not be utilized at this time. We will be taking it, this bill, 121, will be taking it from the EITC that was freed up from Congress, the Act of Congress. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for at least allowing me to speak about that and putting it into the record.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Vice Speaker. Mr. Lenzangan, do you have a comment? Rule short.
Yes. Of course, if the $300 million will not be diverted to the funding of the hospital, the more we will be in trouble because we don't have any tax revenue right now from tourism. Then how would you, where will you get the rest? The EITC only costs maybe $150 million or $200 million, or not even that. And it's specified in the bill only in the fiscal year 2022, the $35 million. All the rest will be from the general fund. The EITC should be used to augment or support the general fund, not use it for the hospital.
All right, thank you. Senator Adda, do you have any questions? None. Senator Moylan, do you have any question on Mr. Lenzangan? None. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions on Mr. Lenzangan?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Lenzangan.
Good morning, Senator.
Welcome. I think you've brought up some reasonable concerns. I guess since you've gone down this road and expressed that you're continuing along the lines of the $300 million, the author, co-author just mentioned that this is in consideration of Guam receiving the reimbursement of the EITC, which even BBMR has discussed with us in a former meeting of the Special Economic Service that may be realized in 2022. So I understand your concerns with the bill. But you mentioned the $300 million as well, as represented by the governor. If the governor continues to have that as part of her plan, and the congressman yesterday did not indicate that that would be a disallowed cost, do at least agree that that money should be set aside as proposed in a trust fund at GIDEA to generate revenue while we anticipate other possible uses? Would that be something you would agree with?
No, thank you, Mr. Senator. Because first of all, there's a misinterpretation here about federal funding. The governor or the past governors are always asserting that they have the control over federal funds via organic act. Show me the section. I have the book here. I don't see anything. All I see here is the appropriation except as otherwise provided in this chapter and accept such appropriation as shall be made from time to time by the Congress of the United States shall be made by the legislature. That's why the Florida governor, DeSantis, makes recommendation for how states should spend federal stimulus money. It's not always the governor that is in charge, but because you let them be in charge, it should be the legislature with the consent of the governor. Of course, you have to have discussion with the governor, but does that mean that he is totally, he can do whatever he wants? Or she can do whatever she wants? Because that's the main misinterpretation from the beginning. They always say you have the power through the organic act. All it says here in the powers of the governor, they control all the agency. That's it, but nothing on the federal funds, funding. Of course, I still do not agree, Mr. Senator, because it's a violation on the guidance of the American Rescue. That's why it's Rescue. Just the name of the title itself, the name of the law, American Rescue Plan Act. If it's American Build Plan Act, then you can build a new hospital. You can build this, you can build that. That's my main concern. I'm sorry.
I know you've been a vocal advocate and have contributed to the public discourse. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood your perspective and take it into consideration. I thank you very much, Mr. Lenzangan, and Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, Senator Chris. Senator Joanne, do you have any question on Mr. Lenzangan?
Mr. Chair, if I could defer to Senator Telo first because I was the last to arrive. I'll have her go first, and I'll go after, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right, Senator Telo.
Thank you, Senator Brown. You know, always consider it and appreciate it. I just wanted to thank you, sir, for being here today. I know you've been an advocate, coming to the legislature and testifying all the time, and I'd like you to continue to do so and bring your concerns. Definitely what you mentioned earlier will be taken into consideration. And you know, you're right. This is about rescue and recover from this terrible pandemic that we had to endure, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you, Mr. Lenzangan, for your persistence over the years. I have to commend you as a member of our public of always coming when you see issues that you want to testify and provide public comment, that you take the time out of your day to come down to the legislature and do so. So even the years I was out of the legislature, I would notice on the news that you would come down and speak out, and I do appreciate that because I know it's a lot of personal commitment to do so. I do register your concerns that you're raising with regards to this. I think everyone wants the absolute best. I think we all want the best healthcare facilities that we can certainly provide for our people and for our families. But you're right, we do need to look at the financial aspects of it. I know we've co-sponsored with Senator Chris Duñez his bill to put aside the $300 million that the governor has publicly stated she wants to put aside out of these federal funds to invest in a new hospital. And certainly, we're all very familiar with the issues of deterioration and the lack of maintenance at GMH over the years. That's been a chronic problem in the government of Guam. And I see that one of the proposals in this particular legislation is to have the contractor that builds also address maintenance. I think it's very good, but the question is, what is the price tag, and can the people of Guam afford it? I see that it's already been put in place that about $35 million of the EITC money, what we currently appropriate for EITC, will be set aside. And I don't know how we come to the determination of $35 billion because I don't know what the cost of the actual facilities are going to be because I'm under the assumption this project has yet to be bid out to know what the market's going to be and what the contractors are going to bid on this particular project. So while I see that figure, I don't ultimately know what it's going to cost. And then I wanted to ask you because this project doesn't just include building a new hospital. I mean, it includes putting in other facilities, like, you know, build a new office for public health, you know, mental health. Let's build another building for mental health. Let's make this great big complex. What are your thoughts on that? Is that something you think we should all do at one time? Can we afford to do it, or do we prioritize one project over the other? You know, mental health does have its, or Guam Behavioral Health, as it's known now, does have its existing facility that could be expanded upon. You know, that facility wasn't built 40 years ago, but I mean, I understand. I want the top of the line too, but I can't always afford the top of the line. And can the people of Guam afford it? Even though we know it's critical to have these facilities, should we consolidate, do it all at one time, and hope that our grandchildren can afford to pay for it down the road? What are your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Madam Senator. You're right, it's a good project, but not right now, in the future, until we recover all the lost revenues from the businesses. You know? And second, what will happen with the maintenance workers at GMH? Because the new contractor or the contractor will do the maintenance, and then again, there will be another cost for the maintenance. I don't think we should be paying for the maintenance. It should be free. And then you're... And then your inquiry about the cost of those three buildings, what I read is almost $1 billion. It's almost close to our debt limit right now and all the funding will be from the general fund. So, yeah, all those things that we need to think about because what would those workers going to be maintaining if their job is no longer needed? I think we are better off with, not with leaseback financing, but if we got the money or we have the grant or we do the financing or we apply and then we have it bid it out and then get a warranty for five years from the contractor, you know? I think that that's better, but not right now, Madam Senator, because right now we are in, we have not yet recovered. Our main industry from Japan and Korea, they're also, the cases are spiking. We won't, we won't receive so many tourists right away as before, maybe another three years or four years. And then by the time, maybe we can convince Uncle Sam to, to issue, to approve a grant for the new hospital, you know? And maybe President Biden will enact the American Build Plan Act and we can bring that issue to build the hospital. So we don't have to spend any money and, and get it from the general fund. That would adversely affect the agency and our people. But I, for sure, if you think about it, how, how would you paper with? There's no revenue coming, you know? That's almost, just the interest alone is almost $4 million a month. That's $1 billion for a 4% interest. $1 billion, especially now that they finally acknowledge that they cannot use the 300 million dollars from American Rescue Plan Act. And the more we'll be in a position not, not to continue with this bill yet. It has very good intention. Who does not want to own a new car? Who does not want to own a new house? Everybody wants new, new, new. But you have to take our current situation. That's the bottom line, Madam Senator.
So, Mr. Lenzangin, with regards to our revenue, you're right, I, I think we're all in that same situation. I, I don't have any comfort level moving forward, even though we do have all these federal funds coming in right now, that we're not going to go through challenging times in the next year or two. Because of our concern, as you mentioned, with regards to our tourism industry, you know, our main markets are going through some challenges and we don't know how soon that visitor industry that we have is going to rebuild, that we're going to be at a level of where we were in January of last year when we were hitting record numbers of tourists coming into Guam. And I kind of concur with you. My concern is how do we bridge over? Right now, we have the federal funding coming in, but as soon as that dries up, you know, as soon as the money that, that the federal government's providing now through those that are unemployed in our community ends in September, assuming there's not another rescue package, I think those realities are going to be felt very quickly. And I'm as concerned as you are, is where do we bridge over between that and when our economy builds up back to where it was, hopefully? Because right now, I'm very much of the opinion we're living in an artificial economy.
Yeah.
Even though we hear statements being made that, oh, no, we're, you know, just a few million here and there less than we were, it's not based on, on a continuing generation of additional money. And so I think that time, you know, the, the roosters and chickens are going to come home to roost, as they say. So that's a very legitimate concern. Right now, we, in the past, we've had the 60-plus million that we paid EITC, but we don't know in the real economy how much money we're actually going to be taking in in the next year or two if we don't have the federal investment coming in. So that's a legitimate concern. You, you mentioned you are of the opinion the current GMH should be refurbished? Is that what you're, you're saying? You rather invest, you said 21 million. Are you saying you would want to see that 21 million reinvested into the current facilities and refurbish it to bringing up to the accreditation standards? Is that your position? I just want to clarify that with you.
Absolutely, Madam Senator. Because as you know, even during the peak of the pandemic, GMH was never overfull. There's still room for ICU, there's still room for the beds. And besides, they have the 60-bed nursing facility at Barrigada. And then you have the GRMC. That's only during the pandemic, only 50% of their bed are occupied. We need to make GRMC survive too, you know? And 21 million is little, very tiny compared to $1 billion that you will spend to these three buildings. And there's been, supposed to be spent, to be appropriated ever since, but they don't appropriate. Now that we have the money, this is the time now to defer maintenance to all buildings, not only Guam Memorial, but also all the Parks and Recreation, all the public health building to put it in place according to the regulation. Because where we are renting right now is older than the public health. And then there's a lot of roads and bridges going to the village that have a lot of potholes. So many important things that this money will be able to help our, our people instead of getting half, spending half of it to the hospital. And even you don't spend half of it, then just like what I said, the more we're in trouble, you know? Because $1 billion, Madam Chairman, just the interest, $4 million a month, it will, and time and time again, just like what I said in the beginning, the, the hospital has proven it is located on a coral ground, you know? They said they even banned or closed the other wing, but you see, up to now, it's still standing strong as before. Since 10 years ago, they closed it or 15 years. And now they, they plan to use it because it can stand and it only needs some, some repair. So 21 million is, is very small to put it into rehabilitation or to be accredited. That's what the U.S. Army Corps stated. And besides, right now, you think the Center for Medicare and Medicaid will be very strict in approving accreditation? Of course, no. You know, their main priority now is to have the hospital operate. That's the main thing. They will not be very strict as before, just like the federal government, SBA. You know, we don't have to pay our loan for, for so many years until next year, just like the government, you don't have to pay your service debt if it's funded by the federal government. They're very, they're very lenient right now, Madam Senator. And yes, the bottom line is it is not the right time because we don't have the money. It is just as simple as that.
Mr. Chair, I just have one last question. Mr. Lenzangin, you mentioned, do you think that the construction of a new GMH may contribute to the demise of our private hospital? Do you think more people will go to a new GMH versus seeking services at the private hospital?
No, Madam Chairman, because the more they will strive harder to beat the competition, you know, more competition, better. You know, but if, if the other business is not innovative, then this is.
So your, your view, the current, the new private hospital is underutilized, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Were you saying that the new hospital is underutilized?
The new hospital?
Yes.
The new or the current hospital?
No, the, the new private hospital.
I cannot speak for, for them because what I only read is during the pandemic that almost 50% are, are not accommodated, there's not enough patients, you know? But people who like to go to GRMC than GMH if they have insurance because they have some specialty, especially for cardiovascular, for heart disease. The only patients of GMH are mostly from Medicaid and don't have any insurance, you know? But that's the reality. You will ask somebody, oh, I'll go to GRMC or, or to Hawaii or to Philippines or to the U.S., you know? And that's what we need to concentrate on. We have to, to take out that mentality. We have to improve the, the efficiency in attending care and that includes everybody from the director, from the doctor to the nurses to the maintenance workers because those are the major concerns of the Center for Medicaid, not only the, the building, the secondary. The main concerns are the operation. And yes, it can be, it can be resolved, you know? We have an energetic and director from, administrator from GMH, which I believe can make it happen.
You know, the reason is just a couple of months ago, this legislature passed a bill to use the, the public funding that's provided as a result of GRMC receiving a GIDA tax certificate, that their community contribution, that the, that a substantial portion of that be used to pay for the salary increases of our nurses. And so I'm just asking you that because I, I think it's ironic, we're scraping to try to find funds to pay for increases for payment and compensation to our nurses that we most definitely feel should receive a higher salary so that we don't lose our nurses off island. I, I just want to point the irony of that out. I mean, that was a recent action of this legislature. And so the actual physical construction of the building is just one aspect. Being able to fund the, the medical staff with the expertise and at a salary level that's commensurate with, with ensuring that we're able to keep them here so we don't lose them to the mainland or other jurisdictions is probably even more important than just the physical structure. But I certainly appreciate your, your, your contribution and your, your public input with regards to this issue.
If may I, Madam Senator, you raise a very important issue about the payment, about the pay raises. Because the American Rescue Act Plan under its guidance is allowed to, to be used for that raises, for the expansion of hiring of more health workers, to pay raise for the nurses, for, for all the health workers that are working in the medical field, like public health, behavioral science, you know? And also public health, anything regarding medical, you know? The American Rescue Act Plan can, can be used.
Mr. Lenzangin, let's wrap this up, okay? We're not going to, we're not going to, we don't have all day just for you. We have several people outside. Senator Brown, do you have any other questions?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lenzangin, I just want to make it very clear. Last year, GMH had a, an assessment, it cost 761 million to rehabilitate GMH, a lot more than the bill. That's one note. Don't require any comment from you. Second one, GRMC has a, has a contract with the veterans to service veterans. Okay? So why don't we just move on from there and thank you for your participation today. And thank you, Madam Speaker, for joining us. We'll take a, a couple minutes so that we can sanitize the chair. Madam Vice.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, because you quoted the statement to Mr. Lenzangin, is to note that the facilities condition assessment to GMH that was done by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, if we can submit that to, an appendant to this committee hearing today and also the letter dated April 9, 2021, from the Department of Veterans Affairs, Washington, signed by Kimberly A. McLean in reference to what you just noted, that the, they have, the Department of the Veterans Affairs has an agreement with GRMC and the services for veterans will be utilized there. So if we can just append these two to the record.
All right, we will. Thank you, Mr. Lenzangin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll take a few minutes so that we can sanitize that area and then we'll have GIDA and GMH folks, please come in, in a couple minutes. Give them a few minutes so they can sanitize that one chair. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Arms. We have now returned from recess. We have Ms. Mel Mandiola from GIDA, Ms. Lilian Posadas, William Cando, and Yuku. Hi, thank you. Hetchenova is here. We'll begin with Ms. Mel Mandiola first. Thank you.
Off a day and good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity for GIDA to speak. My name is Mel Mandiola and I'm the CEO Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. We did send some notes, which were included, I believe, in the fiscal note, and we do not have formal testimony at this time, but we are here to answer any questions that you may have. For the most part, we are in support of this legislation. Public-private partnerships are an effective way to, to finance facilities such as hospitals and that can be done through things such as lease, leaseback. It's been successful with case studies such as Teetzen High School, JFK, and, and we believe, and we've seen it done with hospitals in the past. Just a few observations of the bill by the GIDA team that could possibly be worked through as we continue to work on this, as we work on this legislation are the amounts. So the 35 million set aside, we did run some numbers and based on 35 million, 35 million at a rate of about 5%, which is a typical lease, leaseback financing type of instrument, you're looking at an annual payment of about 37 million inclusive of a 15% to 20% maintenance cost. So it sounds, in its current form, the bill covers potentially the hospital, but the bill is also inclusive. It speaks of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness, Department of Public Health and Social Services. Now, something that's emerged in our medical campus task force and our hospital task force has been that the most expensive of the three agencies will likely be GMH. Initial estimates from Guam Behavioral is that a brand-new Guam Behavioral facility may be around $100 million. Public health currently pays, I believe, about $1 million out of the general fund in rental proceeds around our island. This is not inclusive, I believe, of federal pass-throughs. It's also not inclusive of buildings that they own. They had a fire recently. Employees of the public health are stacked up on each other, right? And so, but at a rental rate of about $1 million, I would imagine that a building for public health would also be right around maybe at the 75 to $100 million mark. So if you're looking at 100 million for each of those respective facilities, and as noted in the Army Corps of Engineers report, approximately 750, you're talking about a total price tag of 950, not including escalation. So the escalation I'm describing, Ordat Chalampago recently went out for an RFP for a multipurpose center. The budget on that was 6.5. The bid received was 9.2. I believe we went out for, we were pricing the rebuild of a high school. We estimated it would be a 60 or 70 million dollar price tag. Recent estimates came back about 110. All of those estimates were done more than two, three years ago. Army Corps of Engineers, this was a 2019 study nonetheless. Nonetheless, if you're looking at 700 million plus 200 million, that's 900 million plus a 10% escalation, right? So we see it adding up. We also see, when it comes to financing, there's a lot of complex instruments, and that's why you hire GIDA to do these things, right? Um, that you can work on. So it is very common for hospitals to enter into lease-leasebacks, very common. Public health facilities, not as, not as common, but not unheard of. Behavioral health, it depends, because behavioral health, there's the out, there's the part that's outpatient, and then there's a part that's residential care. So residential care could be a lease-leaseback potentially. There's also the issue of how much money can be passed through, um, through, uh, as federal grants, through community development block grants, um, other types of, of lending, uh, other types of grant types instruments. There's also borrowing instruments outside of the lease-leaseback model. So you can go to the USDA. So the longest you can go out with a PPP is about 35, um, with a lease-leaseback is about 35 years. You can go out with the USDA for 40 years. The issue with that, though, is USDA, the maximum transaction is 20 million, which falls far short of where we need to be, right? But if there's a component, let's say you need a residential care facility, um, that is one component of a phased medical delivery system that's a $20 million, 40, $50 million price tag, we may say it is most affordable to the people of Guam to go after USDA for this portion, um, lease-leaseback for this portion, HUD for this portion, um, grant funding for this portion, et cetera. So there's a lot of, uh, it's, 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 as much as we'd very much like to write one big check to get the whole thing done, um, it may not be the most feasible, uh, to do that. Um, and, uh, so what we, so what are we doing now? You know, it's all about solutions, right, moving forward? Um, and so with the task force that, uh, we have, we have three different subcommittees. Some of you have been in attendance at some of them. There's a Land and Facilities Subcommittee, the Medical Services Subcommittee, and the Land and Infrastructure Subcommittee. All three of those subcommittees, every time they start talking, GIDA just hears dollar signs, and we start talking about land. It becomes, how much is it to bring infrastructure in? To, uh, property A versus B versus C? How much is it to do one thing over another? When it comes to medical facilities, oh, we didn't realize we needed that. Or, oh, do we still need this? Or, uh, a loss, exactly what Mr. Lenzang and, or, and Senator Brown had mentioned earlier, which is what about the people part, portion of the hospitals, right? What about the people portion of our medical services? And then, um, when it comes to, so land facility, and then when it comes to financing, as I had mentioned before, there's a lot of different tools that we can use. We really like and support that this bill has a dedicated funding source. That's fantastic. We really like that this is going to be utilized for our healthcare system. Uh, we see it, this as being a very viable source for our hospital. Um, we do believe that there's, uh, more information needed, um, which we can provide as, um, as our committee continues to meet and do our homework and power through. Um, and, uh, and I'm, of course, here to answer any questions or take your feedback, uh, back to the, uh, task force, as well as to the Governor's fiscal team in continuing to develop our financing plan for our healthcare system at large. Um, so that's pretty much all I have. Again, I'm here to answer questions. I'm, uh, I have to excuse myself in about 15 minutes. And, um, but otherwise, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lilian?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh, first and foremost, thank you for crafting and introducing this legislation. And as much as we support the concept, the intent, and the principle of this very essential legislation that will definitely support the goal of getting a new healthcare center designed, constructed, and maintained, we take this opportunity to provide some insights and some issues as well as recommendations. But I just want to start on a positive note. Uh, we see this as a gift for the people of Guam. And then there's a section in this, uh, legislation that, um, says that the contractor, while it is constructing the, uh, hospital, uh, wherever it's going to be, that maintenance services will be provided to the existing facility. That to us is a gift, and it's not because there's a lack of maintenance at the current hospital. Believe me, maintenance is ongoing every day at the hospital. And Mr. Kando, who, you know, this is his lane in terms of maintenance. He can speak more about it, or you can ask him those questions. But, you know, the big picture is that it is a gift for, for the hospital to have that maintenance services to augment our team and our resources at the hospital. So, so thank you for that gift. Um, one of the issues is that, you know, the title of this legislation as a center of excellence, just to point out that we can't declare ourselves as a center of excellence. We have to go through a certification, a credentialing process for an order, an organization to then designate us and deem us as a center of excellence. So I just kind of wanted to point that out, that, you know, uh, to declare ourselves as a center of excellence is not on us. It has to come from an organization that will go through the process to determine whether we really are, and we fit, that meet the criteria of a center of excellence. The language that, uh, is written in this legislation, it limits the financing option to the revenue. So we recommend that we'd like to see additional mechanisms, funding mechanisms. As Ms. Mel mentioned, the third arm, or the third subcommittee of this healthcare, uh, medical center task force that has been launched and meeting, uh, to get this medical center campus built, um, we were discussing some financial options, such as perhaps some federal funding, some DOI funding, and even to the point of research grants. And not just from federal institutions of a research, but there are big companies who do research. And maybe if we can also, you know, work with them, be affiliated with them, bring some of that research activity, including the funding. And at the same time, it can also build our people, our young people, young brilliant minds to be, you know, research assistants, researchers, and, you know, become scientists. Because we all see from this COVID that science plays a really big role with healthcare. So that's, that's our recommendation, is to, to include language in this legislation that will then give us options, other mechanisms for funding resources. In terms of the, uh, section 83114, uh, rules on regulations and restrictions, we just want to, uh, clarify and amend it, perhaps, because, you know, the administrative, the AAA Administrative Act, uh, the Office of the Attorney General, the legislature, and, uh, the governor do not come into the process in the drafting stage of rules and regs. Uh, for example, the Office of the Attorney General approves the legality and form of rules after it has been drafted. It does not make the decisions in drafting the rules and regulations. Um, thirdly, the approval of the governor as to policy comes after the rules and regulations are drafted and filled, and filed with the governor. Fourth, finally, the rules and regulations are filed with the Speaker's Office after approval of the governor as to policy and the Attorney General as to legality and form. It is the intent of the, if it is the intent of the legislature to seek another process other than the AAA, you know, it would be great to have that included into the, into this legislation. So those are our comments. Um, and I apologize, I don't have, I didn't have time to write the testimony, but I can certainly finalize what I have, uh, presented here orally and put it together with Mr. Kando and our executive team, our Yucca, our CFO, and we will submit our, our testimony in writing. Thank you.
Yes, please. Um, does any of your staff like to speak? Otherwise, you're speaking on behalf of GMH?
I am, but Mr. Kando can also speak, and Yucca, uh, our financial officer. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Senators.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Kanto. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not used to having directors give me a timeline on when to ask questions, but Ms. Mendiola said she's going to be leaving shortly, and we do have questions for her. Can we, can we address that? Because otherwise, we're going to be in a situation where we're not able to ask her any questions, which I want, I want to know about building the house before I know what's going to go into the house. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if we could ask her those questions before she leaves.
Ms. Mendiola, you got to leave in 15 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll begin with you before we proceed on, um...
That's fine.
I'll ask my vice, my, uh, co-sponsor to ask the first question, and then we'll proceed on to the speaker, and then we'll go around. Thank you.
Um, I, the only question I had for, for GIDA was the, um, Bibi Mar had noted that, that there may have been concerns regarding not, uh, supporting, uh, resources to, to GIDA for these efforts as the facilitator. Uh, what are your recommendations to that?
Generally, when it comes to, uh, how GIDA is compensated on, uh, the work that it does towards financing, it's generally, uh, factored into the transaction. And so, um, if it is unknown at this point, uh, what, um, the makeup of the transaction will be, then, um, then, then we can, well, if we have a better idea of the total picture of what we're working on here, so if it's a 700, um, 700 million lease-leaseback, then we price it similar to how we would any other bond issuance. Um, if we're going after grants, uh, USDA loans, et cetera, then there's also, um, uh, there's reimbursement for costs associated and encumbered. Um, any additional work would have to be covered by grants or other sources of funding. Um, so things such as, uh, right now, we're doing, we're working towards the feasibility study for the hospital, for the medical campus that is being covered by the Office of Economic Adjustment through a grant. And so it would be through, we have to be creative about where the funding comes from for the agency to press forward on working on this project. And the more complex the project becomes, the more expensive it becomes, obviously. Any kind of specialized work you need, if you need to hire specialized attorneys, project managers, et cetera, then you need to take care of that. Then we need to find a way to take care of that.
And thank you very much, uh, Mel, for that. Maybe just one, uh, other question as it relates to the leaseback, uh, component. Uh, what is GIDA's thoughts, um, in those efforts, um, you know, um, emphasizing the, the viability approach? I, I know you noted earlier, but if there's anything further you'd like to add on that, on, on that measure?
I think the lease-leaseback is a very viable way forward, um, in particular for the hospital. Um, and, uh, I think that when it comes to public health and Guam Behavioral, if, if they're not accommodated in the size of this transaction, then I would, I would first explore other avenues, including grant funding and lending, uh, vehicles, other lending vehicles, um, before lease-leaseback, uh, primarily because it's not as common with public health and with behavioral health types of facilities.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, you have any questions on Ms. Mendiola?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, um, Director, for being here and, and willing to answer our questions. Uh, so the first one is, when you estimated about 950 million total, is, uh, what would be the total if we used leaseback for all of that amount? What would we end up paying, uh, after, you know, the leaseback?
Uh, if, let's say the total price tag was 1.1 billion minus...
Well, if it was 950, if we could use that number.
950?
Well, isn't that your estimate, 950 million?
Well, 9.9, 9, 9, how about 990?
Say that again.
How about 990? That's the number I ran. 990, 30 years, 5%, 66 million. Inclusive of maintenance.
Okay. 990 million is the price tag for all three to be combined in a facility. And so what would be the amount that we would have to pay if we use this leaseback, um, financing?
66 million annually, just about. Again, um, Speaker, I do want to note that it's at an estimated rate of 5%. It's also at 30 years. If we went out 35, just give me one moment, please. If we went out 35 years, 52, 62 million, 63 million?
If we went up to 35 years, it would be 63 million annually. And what would be the total then of that? It would, it would total more than the 99?
No, it would just be a longer, it'd be a lower payment, but it'd be a longer term. So instead of 30 years at 66, it'd be 35 at 54, 53. I mean, I'm sorry, 63.
So you're saying that if it costs 990 million, we're going to only end up paying that much if we go through leaseback financing? And that we are going to be able to pay it over a longer term?
Potent, I, potentially...
I thought that the leaseback adds on, uh, additional...
Yes, that's incorporating a 20% maintenance.
All right, if, could you, um, if you could do those calculations and send it to us? So you're saying that there is no increased cost to the government of Guam from paying it in cash, 990 million upfront, versus leasing it over 35 years?
Uh, no, um, Madam Speaker, I don't think I said that there's no cost associated with paying for it upfront. I was just under the impression we're not able to pay for it upfront.
Well, what is the, you said the estimate of the building, or the, the cost of construction is 990 million?
At our preliminary estimates, Army Corps of Engineers provided a number of around 750 million.
For the hospital alone?
For the hospital alone. We've worked with Guam Behavioral and Public Health. There have been no formal numbers thrown out, uh, besides estimates, 100 to 125 for both, so 200 million. So that's a 9, a price tag of about 950.
Right.
From what we've been seeing, we've been seeing escalation all over the island for cost of construction. And so we went ahead and factored in 10% or so.
Right.
Uh, and then we reduced it by about 200 or 300 million in accordance with what the governor is sharing as far as ARP, usage of ARP, um, for maybe A and E, or something along those lines. Um, so if we come back to a 990 figure at 5%, um, then we're looking at about a 66 million dollar price tag, inclusive of about a 20% maintenance. 20% maintenance is double how much we pay for schools, I would imagine, only because, again, these are preliminary numbers, but, uh, hospital's more high maintenance than a school. Hospitals use 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
So you're saying the 99, 990 million estimate is in, is your estimate of 66 million dollars annually? It's not an estimate of the cost?
Estimate of the annual payment to the bondholder.
Right. I'm asking for, what is the construction cost that you're estimating?
990, plus whatever money is pledged to the, by the governor, 200 million or 300 million out of ARP.
No, without financing, what is, what is your estimate of how much it's going to take?
Okay, if we had the cash, all the cash in the world to build this building, I think 1.2 billion would be nice to give to the hospital, public health, and, and, uh, public health in Guam Behavioral for the, what they'd like to do.
Means that, we need to know the estimate of the cost so we can compare that versus how much it's going to cost to finance this in this way versus another way, and, uh...
The estimate of the cost from the Army Corps of Engineers is 745 million.
That's for the hospital alone, and then you added on the other projects.
There are no estimates right now for Guam Behavioral or for Public Health. And the reason there are no estimates is because, um, we're still working on that. Um, uh, we're still working on what both of those agencies and what their needs are. Um, the vision of the governor, the vision of Governor Lianggoro was to put everybody kind of in one campus. Having said that, the role of the task force is to see what makes sense and see what makes sense in accordance with what resources we currently have available. Public health owns clinics around our island. There's also GMH. There's been ideas about GMH being utilized as a public health. These are all things that the task force is unraveling and figuring out. But at this point in time, we don't have an estimate for Guam Behavioral or Public Health. We are throwing these numbers out there, just as estimates based on, from GIDA, it's estimates based on how much they pay in rent.
Yes, I appreciate that. And so I just want to know the difference between this, the cost of this type of financing, they're only dedicating 35 million annually, and here, you're, you're saying, uh, you're calculating 66 million annually. So I just wanted to know if we financed it another way? What, what is that, uh, the starting, what's our starting cost? Before financing? And so if that's not the 990 million, then, then yeah, I'm looking for another number?
So financing in other ways, so you're saying not paying upfront, but financing it through other instruments?
No, this is not paying upfront. This leaseback is financing it over 35 years at, as you said, 5% and 20% maintenance. And, and so, yeah, if we were able to finance it another...
So if you're looking at USDA, so we'd have to look at what portion is financeable by the USDA. USDA can go out 40 million.
I'm just asking for the, for the construction cost, the basic construction cost without financing. What was, what is your estimate? And I thought that you had added from 77 million to, plus the 1 point sum for public health, and I think 1.7 for behavioral health?
So it was, uh, 750 for the hospital, uh, and estimates of about 250 from public health and Guam Behavioral collectively, 1 million total, and then factoring in... behavioral collectively, 1 million total, and then factoring in about a 10% escalation.
Okay. All right, I will work with that then. And then, this dedicates this earned income tax credit, 35 million that we are going to be reimbursed. This is, you know, reimbursed based on current, what we are currently paying out for EITC and, but I wanted to, in the fiscal note, they said, it should be noted that per the consolidated revenue and expenditure report for the month ending March 31st, a shortfall of 9.6 million is projected for general fund revenues in FY 2021. So do you believe it is feasible to dedicate this 35 million in light of those shortfalls?
I think I defer to my colleagues at BBMR and RevTax for that, for, to answer that question.
All right. And then, do you have any idea where, if it's 66 million annually, where we should get the balance above the 30? Well, I guess you did give us USDA HUD and grants funding. Those should be other options that we look at to make up for this.
I think so. I think those should be explored. Yes, yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, and then, oh, how soon will you be able to know, like, generally, how much funding you would be able to get from grant sources, HUD, or USDA?
I think that's largely dependent on the individual agencies. So I think public health has their stream of funding, Guam behavioral as well, and, and GMH. So I think that would largely depend on the flow of funds of the agencies.
Is it possible that we would know that within the year? Or we won't even know that within, yeah, do you have any estimate of time? I mean, because I know you're, you know, you're the overall planning, it's going through you, so...
I think that's, I think that's great homework, Madam Speaker, for the task force, insofar as if each of the agencies can kind of turn in what opportunities there are for construction funding by grants, then that's, that is possible, ma'am.
All right. And what about USDA? You've worked with USDA and many of our, how long would you estimate? Just to, for us to get a very clear picture of when we...
Right. USDA, I think, is largely, we'd have to decide what is the most appropriate for USDA funding. So USDA, generally, the magic, the sweet spot for USDA is right around the 20 million mark. So all three facilities are relatively large for a USDA loan. Having said that, I think, I mean, having said that, it can be done. It has been done in the region. It's just a matter of, I think, if, let's say Guam behavioral or public health were to say, or, or GMH were to say, this is phase A, phase A will cost 100 million, phase B can wait, and that'll cost, then, then that can be, I think that can be explored with a very realistic timeframe.
All right, thank you. And then your estimates of costs, do those include the infrastructure? Because as you said, they had some infrastructure costs associated with different properties, and one that I had heard was like 200 million for the Eagles Field infrastructure. Is that included in your estimate of the total or not?
That's a great observation, Madam Speaker, and it's not. If you recall, in the Army Corps of Engineers study, the 750 assumed that land was ready.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you. Senator Jim Moynihan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For GITA, thank you for your testimony, appreciate working together with BBMR and coming up with the fiscal note. It did note on the, on the note, does, that GITA does, although the legislation does appropriate funding to carry out some of the proposed mandates, it's not clear to how quickly these funds will be available. Can you kindly expand on that, please?
I'm sorry, Senator, would you please repeat the last part of your question?
Sure. The fiscal note states, "It is further noted by GITA that although the legislation does not appropriate funding to them to carry out some of the proposed mandates, it is not clear as to how quickly these funds will be provided."
Yes, normally, when it comes to issuing public debt, et cetera, GITA is paid at the, the end. If the lead time for such a project is several years, then this is, we're talking about the Board of GITA authorizing potential expenditure of funds to get these projects prepped, and, it's prepped and kind of underway. And so we'd, we'd be interested to know what the timing is, what, what we're contemplating as far as timing for funding. As I mentioned earlier, with a lease leaseback, it's not a cut and dry transaction. You're not building, you're not, it's not, it's not a transaction we're doing every day. And so you do need a little bit more in the way of legal support. You do need it more in the way of specialist, specialized support in the hospital space. Who is to front that money? That's generally the concern of, of GITA. We can, the GITA Board can authorize fronting that money, of course, but if a project is expected to take multiple years, then you're talking about several years being at risk of, of GITA's financials being at risk. We're a small agency, so that's our major concern.
Understood. So you mentioned, out of the three buildings to be constructed, considering the amount that the governor wishes to appropriate from the American Recovery Plan, the 300,000, we would just have enough or will still need more to complete the project of the one building being the hospital?
It will largely depend on, if the markets behave, okay? If the markets behave and if we're going out for lease leaseback, then this is enough, then the, I believe we were looking at, it comes very close to being able to fund the hospital structure alone, yes.
Okay. And then my last question, Mr. Chairman. OFB gave a statement also that should the bill pass in FY 22, it will have an, it will have over 71 million impact on the general fund revenue, which otherwise would be available to other government operations and appropriations. Do you think that's an affordable thing we should consider? Or do you feel after OFB's statement that we can still manage the loss in revenue from the general fund and building this new hospital in addition with the, with the additional funds that the governor is appropriating for this purpose?
I'm, I didn't take a look at the, I didn't see the fiscal notes, Senator, so I'm not sure how OFB, the rationale behind deriving that number.
Okay, understood. Right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Chris, do you have any questions?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. You know, when I look at the collective testimony, in particular to you, Mel, kind of bringing us back to the numbers and the reality here, I, I look at this, this bill as being laudable, ambitious, but voluminous nonetheless. And that seems to be the collective testimony. I, I direct that to you because I, I do concur with my colleague, Senator Moynihan, in the observation of funds available. And we're consistently talking about funds that we haven't really drilled down on yet. So I think it's going to be very important, as BBMR has noted and the fiscal note has noted, that we kind of get our numbers together and let that drive the mission. Does GITA concur with that? Because even this bill identifies the $300 million dedicated that the governor has stated that she wants to use for the hospital. So that's in the bill. And, and then you've now have really kind of given us the sober reality of, if this bill were to come to fruition, we're looking at over double the debt service that's currently set aside. And yesterday, outside of the testimony that's been provided here, BBMR indicated in our meeting with the governor that, that there was a desire to use anticipated revenues on, on reimbursements of EITC as well as tax credits to smooth the budget going forward in lieu of what the coming fiscal years will bring. So it seems like we need way more talk, discussion, and probably round tables and, and, and work to be able to, to deal with this. I mean, would that be GITA's perspective? I mean, let's, let's nail down some numbers so we really understand what our debt service capabilities are.
I, I concur, Senator Duñez. I think it was brought up earlier by Senator Brown when she had noted that the bill took into account, it mentioned public health and behavioral health. And when we started to run the numbers adding those, that's when we started to have some questions. We've also not, I, I mean, I've definitely spoken about the sobering reality of taking on debt, but we've also not explored the opportunity such as any potential reuse of the existing GMH facility in two, in two months that has an economic value. And so I think that, yes, more analysis is, is absolutely necessary. More analysis from the, not from the perspective of we can't afford it, but more from the perspective of our people need it. How are we going to make it? How will we all come together to make it happen?
Sure. And, yeah, and absolutely. I've definitely, as I said, laudable, and certainly, all these projects are worthy, particularly the hospital. We've been talking about that for years. It's in motion. We're represented by Senator Ty DeGruy very adequately. She's reported to us a number of times that the conversations are going well with regard to moving forward with the task force. But yeah, yeah, a lot of those are, are, you know, things that we have to take into consideration, certainly. But I think it's always appropriate, from the legislator's, legislator's perspective, that, you know, we have to manage it first to understand, you know, those realities. While we do have valuable property and other assets to be taken into consideration, going out for financing, you have to know what, what your dollar figure is upfront. So I just appreciate your, your participation here and giving us the numbers that we have to work with. Because as I said, even just the debt service on, on this voluminous project is, is over twice what is identified here. And we have to reach back to BBMR in consultation because, of course, it's going to be our decision at the end because this, this is a legislative appropriation in terms of reimbursements of EITC. That's the purview of the legislature. We have to make sure that everybody's on the same sheet of music when we come to the budget process because there are other considerations that, that, that revenue was designed at this point, at least from the administration's perspective, to smooth out the fiscal years and the bumpy roads ahead. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr., and Senator, I'm sorry to, this is unsolicited, but I, I do think that the bill, it really does speak to the hospital portion well. And, and, and I think that if the bill can somehow continue to include public health and behavioral health in the conversation, but not box all three into one transaction, I think that's what's necessary to look into.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? And Ms. Mendyel?
I do, Mr. Chair. But again, and courtesy to my colleagues that arrived before me, I defer to Senator Ty DeGruy, and then I can ask questions after. Thank you, sir.
Senator Ty DeGruy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, ladies. It's good to see you in person, since we're on Zoom all the time, talking about the, you know, the hospital and, and actually, the medical campus is what we're calling it during these task force. And appreciate all the hard work that you put into it, Mel, especially yourself as a chairman. And, you know, there's so much to say right now because of, if I'm going to bring up all the discussions we've had in the task force and all three meetings that were held last week. But we're here on the financial side of it, and it was, in fact, that was the last discussion we had, if I'm not mistaken, in the task force. Mel, as the chairman of this task force of the hospital, have you met with the authors of this legislation? Because it was never mentioned in the task force about this particular bill. We looked at all different avenues on financing, from federal programs to bond financings to public-private partnership. So is this something that the task force needs to put a pause on with regards to how to move forward because of this legislation? Or did you know about this legislation at all before going into the task force?
I think, thank you for that question, Senator. And I think what's, what's been happening is that in some of the previous studies, I believe it was the 2016 commission by Senator Rodriguez, there was discussion about the use of lease leaseback financing. So we always knew it was going to be on the table as a possible option that would not affect the debt ceiling. And so at the, at the time of the introduction of this legislation, we were still in discussion about it with the, with the front office, with the Office of the Governor as well. And so this is definitely something that would become a part of task force discussion, particularly in the Finance Committee. If you recall, I mean, because that was sort of our kickoff Finance Committee meeting, we were trying to understand everything and the stat, where we've come from and where we're looking to go. So this would be a definite focal point of discussion going forward.
Okay, so I can assume that that's going to be probably, you know, it sounds like it's already anticipated that it's a done deal, that this is the process that we're going to go through when it comes to financing the hospital. Because we know through the debt ceiling, we're only at a limited, and we only have, what is, what is the total right now that we have? 353,102, 730 for any future debt obligations moving forward. So of course, this, the cost of the financing for the hospital actually is, if you're, I recall, the hospital is going to cost 817 million. Public health, behavioral wellness, it's each at 100 million, infrastructure at 50 million. That's a total of 1 billion 67 million 300,000. I don't know where this 99, 99 million is coming up, you know, 999 million is coming up, but I've always thought of it as, you know, 1 billion 67 million. And then, of course, less the governor's 300 million, taking us at 776 million 300 to finance. But incorporating the, the, as well as the issues on the, you know, 30-year financing, I'm coming up here with an annual lease payment of 60 million 982, 845 that, that we discussed about. And, you know, one of my colleagues was talking about OFB's comments, and if he finished, it said, you know, I, I know you didn't have a chance to read it, but if he finished, it says, "Note, based on the government of Guam current precaution, precarious financial condition in which the precarious, I'm sorry, precarious financial condition in which the general fund and majority of special fund revenues collections are tracking less than projected budget amount for these funds, caution is recommended in utilizing any of these revenue sources at this time. Such revenue sources will be needed and critical for fund government of operations in fiscal year 2022." In my meeting with the governor yesterday, I asked a question about any future, you know, shortfalls that will come by. And, and she told us, in the next three years, anticipating 370 million dollars in shortfalls, shortfalls. So it's, it's very difficult, you know, I've been the greatest advocate in building a new hospital. You guys know that, you know? Moving forward with this legislation, trying to put it in stone right then, right now, may be premature. I mean, obviously, there are a lot of brain, brainiacs in this task force that are coming up with ideas to how we're going to move forward and how we're going to finance this. In particular, which I was going to bring up in our next meeting, was while the medical campus concept is being floated throughout the discussions of the task force, has GITA or GMH leadership considered whether the construction, constructing a new facility that is not of equivalent size as recommended by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers? Hence, the, the whole scenario of the Southern High School, you know, that was built and many of the rooms are underutilized.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, I'm sure that this is something that also needs to be discussed or, and that, that will adjust the cost of, of building this hospital. I know we want to put everything under the sky in this hospital and make it a huge, you know, not only a, a medical campus, you know, but the hospital itself, to be a teaching hospital. And Lily and you and I discussed about making it a resident, residency hospital too. And this will bring in doctors from other countries, you know, to be able to go through residency on Guam and U.S. territory, so. But, I mean, we haven't even discussed that yet on the size of the hospital. Maybe I missed it, but, but I've been at every single task force meeting that I can be in, one that I've missed. The first one, they forgot to send me the email, but, so the, these are, are great considerations. I, I was worried too, Mel, that how can we appropriate any monies that have been, have not been realized? This is on page 11, line 20. The Earned Income Tax Credit, you know, this can change at any time. You know, right now, they're saying that we don't, you know, have to, but it could change. We also know, when we're here from public health, when they come in, they're going to tell us about, we still are obligated, the 45% for Medicaid. That money's going to have to come from somewhere. I mean, there's no cap on it, but we still have to come up with that funding. So there's a lot of concepts on this, and it's something that I think we all need to work together. And that last question about the size, we'll bring... Uh, and that last question about the size, we'll bring it up in our next task force meeting. I know, Mel, you're, you're short on time. I appreciate you staying a little bit longer. Um, uh, GMH funding from, oh yeah, also the funding of opportunities, Mel, or maybe, uh, Lily and you can answer this. What are the possibilities on funding opportunities from the outer islands and, you know, from the insular areas that can also provide, uh, the sustainable, uh, cost of, of the lease?
Well, uh, Senator, to speak to your first, um, observation on, I think a phased approach is always a wise approach because you don't, we're not building our dream house here. We don't have the money and we don't have, um, we don't, we don't have the money to do that. I think we can all recognize that. Um, we build what we can afford and what is most, um, in need. And I think a phased approach is the prudent way to move forward, um, such that it never has to be the 70 million or 60 million or whatever that number was earlier that we threw around. Um, I think a phased approach is a wise approach towards a medical campus. I think a vision is important and I think working towards that vision is important, but I don't think it all needs to be, we don't need to sign the, we don't need to sign the contract for 700 million upfront. That's, I think that's an, um, it's, it's a less prudent approach. Um, uh, and then for the outer islands, I refer the, um, for our brothers and sisters around us in Micronesia, I know that the Department of Interior recently paid for a hospital in Chuk. Um, and so I, I guess I would defer over to Administrator Passadas on that.
Thank you. Absolutely. I mean, it's worth exploring every option that we can and working with the, uh, you know, the other islands and DOI and the insular affairs. Yes, we would like to explore that, you know, educational, um, also funding sources. That's another area, another option, another mechanism that worth exploring. How can we really be affiliated with an educational institution that then we can be the, the practicum, the facility to help these individuals who are pursuing, you know, uh, preparation or educational degrees in nursing, in, you know, allied health, respiratory therapy, even pharmacy. Cause we don't have those programs available in Guam, but we could probably, you know, make that available, not just for Guam, but for the other islands to build their workforce, their resources. So yes, we will look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And Mel, you've been really good at giving everybody homework, you know, so this is one that you haven't issued out and that's the homework for the insular area. Um, who's going to look into that and, and reach out to the, um, Department of Interior as well as the island. So I hope you give somebody that homework task to do. So thank you, ladies, for being here and Guam Memorial for being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? Cause there's no questions from Senator Anna back here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, Ms. Mendiola, thank you. I know we've extended your 15 minutes, but I, I-
I canceled my appointment, so I can stick around for my-
I appreciate it. I, I, it's just, these are critical issues. I mean, at the end of the day, we all would love to see a new state-of-the-art facility. I don't think anyone here would argue-
Absolutely.
Uh, the desire to have that and certainly our healthcare professionals that have to work under less than desirable circumstances, I think we all recognize it, but it comes down to the very work that you're doing is the dollars, is, is, you know, show me the money and wanting to know where are we going to get it and how are we going to finance it and how are we going to sustain over what may be a 30 to 40-year obligation where probably many of us, if none of us here will still be around, at least at our age, uh, to even see when this debt gets paid. Um, what is the largest bond financing the government of Guam has undertaken so far? What's the largest amount we've ever borrowed on the bond market?
In one issuance, let me get back to you. I will, uh, send that question to public finance. It was certainly in the hundreds of millions. Um, but let me get back to you on, I mean, in, in the next two minutes or so.
At least some of the figures that I'd heard, I mean, at least like when the airport undertook a bond was several, like several hundred million.
Yeah.
There might be something larger than that.
200 million, 300 million.
Yeah. Around, that's kind of like, you know, at least what I've heard, unless certainly when you come back, you can let us know if their figure is higher than that. And, you know, I know the airport was, was borrowing it for extending their runways. I know, you know, infrastructure of GPA, GWA. Uh, it's not as visibly tangible for people to see. Maybe JFK might be the most recent thing people might look at. They tangibly can see visibly every day. Um, and if I recall, maybe you can confirm, I think we were paying like 25 million a year in debt service for JFK. Um, but, but do you also have consolidated figures right now? What is our current overall debt payment, uh, on bonds now?
Yes, let me pull up the, um, let me pull up the, the, the schedule on that or, um, and then I can provide it to you.
Because as we know, I mean, the payment of debt service almost comes off the top before we address other obligations of the government. So I'd like to know currently, yes, where, where are we now? And then certainly what will this add to the table? I'm just going to elaborate while you're looking at for those figures. Uh, as reported here with the Office of Finance and Budget, it's noted that about, we're looking at $35 million coming from EITC and then perhaps, and, because I saw the word "and," and another 35 million to be appropriated annually from the general fund revenues. So we're talking, you know, 70-plus million dollars a year of additional debt service. That's a substantial amount, uh, at a time when I don't know between now, next year, financially where the government's going to be as a result of this pandemic, when our financial resources, uh, and contributions from the federal government, uh, decrease. Uh, so that's a big concern I would have. And then, you know, who knows? I, I mean, we didn't know last year, early last year, I mean, in December, what, of 2019, this whole issue of, of the pandemic came to light and we understand there's always uncertainties in the future and at some point you just got to make a decision. Uh, but we don't know where we're going to be in terms of recovery over the next several years and whether or not our private sector is going to be able to get back into full operation to where we were in, in January of last year. So, I mean, as we're moving forward and making these very big decisions, maybe the single largest financial debt that this government may take out on the bond market at a time of tremendous uncertainty. So like I said, nobody's arguing the need for a new facility, uh, and not just a facility. I, I had just mentioned a couple of months ago, I mean, we were scrounging at, looking at funding services with regards to being able to pay for the salary increases for our nurses. Uh, we know we have circumstances also at the hospital, also with the equipment. I've, I've been down that list with Mr. Canto, where some of the critical equipment's like 15, 20 years old and way beyond its lifespan, but they're using it as long as they can to keep things operating. We know that we're currently not able with regards to our emergency room up at GMH, fully staff each emergency room and have all the facilities and equipment that we need should the need be there. We had a major, you know, catastrophe or something that required that many people at a single time to go through or need an operation or surgery. We don't have the capability now fully being able to do that. Uh, so I, I appreciate the building, but the building's only one component. It's making sure we have the, the medical staff with the expertise and the resources that we need to fund it. So, um, if you have those funds available, uh, figures, can you elaborate on that?
Sure. Uh, the largest issuances had to do, from the general fund, had to do with the BPT.
Okay.
2011, 2012, 2013, and 2015. Um, about 700 million as of, let's say, the end of fiscal 2019.
Okay.
Um, and I am currently looking for our annual obligation. And this is not inclusive, um, and kind of while I, uh, I just sent, sent the question to our finance team. But, um, while we're on this, this is also not, um, inclusive of debt that has been undertaken by our revenue agencies, so GWA bonds-
Right.
And so on and so forth. So those have generally been some, they've been in tranches, 200 million times three, 600 million.
Right. And they're paid out of their own, they're paid out of their own revenue sources, but we're looking at this specific source.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, it's not an autonomous agency that generates enough money to, to pay for its operations and finance. Uh, you know, GMH is not financing this bond. So, um, aside from that, I mean, of course you have the autonomous agencies that are able to address financing on their own and that's how they're able to execute those bonds. But things coming out of what would ultimately be the general fund.
Right.
Uh, do we have what that annual figure is we currently pay now and?
Yes, I'll have that for you in just a moment. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But we have about, um, let's see, we have the general obligation, BPT, uh, to BPT limited obligation. Uh, we have some loans, um, the hotel occupancy tax bond that was recently refied, uh, section, uh, let me see, and the certificates of participation for our lease leasebacks on JFK, Okudu, and Tizen. About one, let me see, about 1 billion, 1, uh, 1070, 1.1, uh, for the total, subject, the total, total amount, but I don't have the, I don't have the annual figure yet. Let me get that for you.
Okay.
Okay.
And then on average, what is the length of these, these bonds? 30, 40 years on average for almost on average?
40 years, not usually, usually 30 years.
Okay.
But if there's a, if there is a 30 years from the initial issuance, if there is a refinancing, so, uh, for example, if it's a 30-year at 2011 and then we refinance in 2021, then it's 20 more years.
Yeah, it extends the life.
Yeah. We don't, we don't keep going out and out and out. Um, that's not, um, not, not desirable at this, um, not, not an appetite for that. I'm sorry, Senator, I don't have that information for you just yet.
Could we, Mr. Chair, give Ms. Mendiola a few more minutes to get that figure? Maybe we can continue with Mr. Canto. I know I interjected when Mr. Canto was starting his testimony, but we certainly wanted to make sure we were able to interact and get some feedback from our GITA administrator. Would that be acceptable?
Uh, sure, Senator Brown, we can go ahead and go back to you when, um, Ms. Mendiola gets that information.
Oh, okay. Hi, hi, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Canto, did you want to go ahead and, uh, give your testimony?
I thought, you know, Chairman Sinocci's voice drastically changed and I had to, I had to take a second book, maybe a third book. Yeah, wow, okay. You, you look very nice up there.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Canto?
Yes, thank you, Senator Anna, and good morning, uh, Madam Speaker and Senators of the 36th Guam Legislature. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on, uh, on this bill, 121-36. As the hospital administrator Passadas had mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, this bill mentions , uh, developing, uh, funding a contractor to then, would also be involved in maintaining and repairing, uh, capital equipment and infrastructure of the new hospital and even working with us, uh, in, in maintaining the existing hospital. So I just want to supplement what she had said, uh, and, and, uh, we think that we recommend that in, within the bill, we need to recognize the, uh, the facilities maintenance workforce of our, of our existing hospital and our IT, also our IT workforce, uh, of, of the hospital. Cause it talks about, the bill also talks about having local support, uh, to maintain, uh, to develop the EHR and, and maintain the, uh, EHR system of the new hospital. Uh, this, our workforce, uh, facilities maintenance and our IT workforce, they, they are 24/7, 365 days of the year. If it had not been for them, we would not have successfully responded to COVID-19. I can, I can unequivocally make that statement, uh, because I, I work with them in the trenches. I, uh, we go to, we go to war in, in responding to all hazards, all hazards, emergencies, whether it be COVID, whether it be tropical cyclones, uh, on Guam, you name it, we've had various emergencies and they all are required to respond. Uh, and it's early in the morning, it's on the weekends. We don't, we don't discriminate the time of the day, the time of the year, we're there 24/7, 365. And so that needs to be taken into account. Uh, uh, we, we engage, so we see what we think this bill means is a public-private partnership relative to maintenance and IT infrastructure, which we're currently engaged in. Our IT workforce is currently engaged in, uh, a public partnership with MedSphere. We're planning to launch, uh, a new EHR at the existing hospital, uh, by October of this year. We have similar public-private partnerships, uh, all the time with various projects, uh, by our facilities maintenance departments and, uh, and so the operations department, division, uh, in, in its totality, we, we as a team engage with other contractors to make, to make all these projects happen. And so we envision that same kind of public partnership, uh, public-private partnership, uh, in this bill. And so I, we just want to make sure that, that the hospital workforce is recognized, uh, for the, uh, for the outstanding work that they do and, and they're always there for the people of Guam. That's all I have.
Ms. Hetsunova, do you have anything you wanted to present, testify?
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, Speaker Terlaki, and Senators. I'm actually here just to support, um, the administrator and Mr. Cando. And I did wanted to just, uh, make a small, uh, point out something in the, in the bill that I noticed regarding the IT system. Um, in section 83111C, it is requiring GITA to include specifications that the provider of the IT systems have a local office and have technicians actually stationed on Guam. And the situation right now is as Mr. Cando, um, mentioned that, uh, we are a 24/7, 365-day operation. And the IT services that we get when there are downtimes is usually done, uh, remotely, virtually, through telephone, through email, because the technicians and our consultants with the IT systems are actually not on island. So I think if we had to require that GITA shall require that these people be stationed, uh, here on Guam physically, it would severely limit the pool of, um, providers of these services. So I guess this is really a matter of, uh, whether it's necessary or not to have them be physically stationed on Guam. Uh, that, that's, that's all the comments I had on the bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Mendiola, do you have anything so we can finish up with Senator Brown's questions?
Yes, 100 and, oh, I'm sorry. About 105 million is our annual debt service at the current time. Uh, it goes down in about, by fiscal 32. Um, and by fiscal 41 reduces to very, um, more than half. So about 105 million annually.
So we pay about 105 million off the top annually right now?
That's correct.
Nice to know it'll decrease in 32 and 41, but I'm sure by then probably another, other bond obligations will be put in place to increase that number. I don't, I don't know what we'll be doing in, in 2041, but, uh, appreciate the information. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the indulgence of asking these questions.
Thank you. Does any of my colleagues, or, or Ms. Mendiola, simple question, you mentioned it was 750, you started with GMH and then you added, uh, roughly another 200 million for, uh, public health and, uh, behavioral, correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, that was a largely a back of the napkin analysis on my Excel, on my cell phone. Uh, it was about 750.
I'm just, I'm just doing the same thing with you. You want to do a napkin, so let me throw it at you, Mel, okay?
Sure, sure. It was about 750.
750, 250 comes up to about 900, 950, right?
Oh, so 750 plus 200 is 950, yes, sir.
Okay. And if you, if-
And then I factored in about a 10% escalation, right? So about 990.
Oh, oh, hold on, Mel. Hold on, Mel. Let, let, let me just lead you on before you lead me. I already heard you earlier, okay? We look at the 900, if we take a look at the factor like Senator Chris brought up, a, a bill for the 300 million to go to GMH, if the governor was to move that money to take care of only public health and behavioral and we only focus the money for GMH to build a brand-new hospital, we're looking at 750, what would be the annual payment we'd be making? Would we still be within the 35 million a year?
I think we'd be cutting it closer, but I think it can be done.
Okay. Thank you.
700 million, yes.
That's all I wanted.
Yes.
All right. I wanted to make sure GMH's being built, okay? That, I'm, I'm focused on that. I was in the police department when GMH was closed down and we went to the new, the current GMH. I'm familiar with both public health and behavioral. So if there, is anyone who'd like to, Madam Speaker, do you have any questions to the GMH folks? Okay. Let me go around first. Senator Moynihan, do you have any question for the GMH folks? None, Senator Duñez?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, I, I don't know if it's a question particularly, but at least a couple of comments. Uh, Lily and thank you for being here. Mr. Cando, we know of your extensive, uh, representation of the legislature and advocacy throughout. And of course, Yuka, we know that you've been a welcome addition, uh, while not recent, but certainly a welcome addition to GMH's finance team. So thank you all for being here. Uh, you know, I guess it is a question, Lily and I, you know, and I appreciate you and, and Bill Cando mentioning the fact that, uh, you know, you recognize the, the maintenance aspect recognized in this bill. I, I guess the only reason why I believe, I mean, we should always be recognizing your maintenance needs and requirements, you're, you're, you're the, you're one of the three critical areas that our government has to absolutely take care of. It is our fundamental responsibility. I guess since we're talking about, uh, I think we've been discussing, uh, maybe we've been talking about, uh, I don't advocate eating elephants, but when you eat elephant, as, as the statement goes, one bite at a time, right? I, for me, I think the hospital is the most important thing we're going to do right now in the, in the coming years. But when we talk about maintenance and your recognition in this bill of a, a couple of years- in this bill of a couple of items, is there anything that prevents you from, you know, applying that in your annual budget request? I think we should see beyond this bill and make sure that that's always taken care of. So I just wanted to pose that question to you.
You asked about the annual budget?
Right.
We do include the maintenance, absolutely. We include that in our budget. And we also include the CIP, not in the budget, but a tab in the budget book that we submit, that these are the critical equipment that we want, we need, not want, but we need from the hospital. Unfortunately, we don't get that funded. So we use our operational funds to then procure those critical equipment. But yes, we do include all of that in our budget.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, we have our Chairwoman here, very capable and has included us in the committee. I know that in the past, she's worked on getting you that 10 million plus other resources, two GMH. And just for the record, outside of this bill, it's one of the reasons why when we submitted our list to the Governor of requests, outside of the 200 million that we've recognized of the 300 she was asking for, because there are other things we're looking at working on. But we can go with either number, whatever, wherever we end up. But there was 22 million as well, recognized. So we are absolutely cognizant of your needs. This bill, while definitely, like I said, laudable and has a lot of these, you know, features in it, in my opinion, humble opinion ever so be it, that is something we should constantly be doing and recognize it today. So that's why we also, you know, as the cash rolls in here in the coming days, that 22 million should be able to do that well prior to this bill and going forward in each budget cycle. Although I do agree with you, it's a good recognition in this bill. But I just think we're going to have to really do a lot of work here in the coming days. But I just wanted to be on the record saying I support your maintenance efforts. I'm glad the Speaker and the rest of us, you know, saw the wisdom in that 20-plus million to start with, to help you guys out, to make sure you can do all this stuff going forward.
Thank you, Senator.
We'll talk about the trust fund bill, but I don't want to belabor that point. I'm going to beg the Chairman to hear that bill, because I'm dying to hear what Mel has to say about that. But we'll wait until that public hearing comes up. Jesus Massey, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Chris. Senator Brown, do you have anything?
Befriend, ask Senator Tellus, I don't have to keep asking you to ask her.
Okay, then I'll have you next time moved to another area. Senator Attia, do you have any questions? No questions. Senator Tidy, do you have any questions?
I was like one of the first people that showed up, so, you know. Just for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate again Senator Brown's consideration. You know, the total amount, again, you said for, to, you know, I know the electrical panels needed, all the other things that are, that you're trying to keep updated on the maintenance of the hospital. What is the total amount, again, I'm sorry, that you'll need just for those upgrades right now? I mean, this hospital is not going to be built next year, so you got to maintain what you have at the hospital right now. But what's the number?
Well, we've identified for FY '22, I think it was about $10 million. We're not going to be able to do everything that's part of the Army Corps, that represents, for us, we did our own deep dive on the Army Corps assessment, and our needs are somewhere between 30 to 35 million, not 21 million. But you don't do all of that in one year. And some of the projects, you know, because we are anticipating building a new hospital, we're taking a different tact. Like on, we're not planning to replace the main panel. We're planning to maintain it using our partnership with the GPA. So that's why that budget has shifted a little. But we are pursuing these projects by priority. Like, we're already pursuing the design phase for the roof upgrade, things of that nature, and so...
Could we get a timeline and a cost analysis for each project that you're trying to maintain throughout? I remember during budget time, you gave those list of, you know, your wish list, and how much it was going to cost or estimate it. So if we can get a timeline attached to that as well, so we can see those times, it's important to do that. And, Mr. Chair, you know, just a, real quick, because I sent, being part of the task force, and there was a document that was provided to us. And when you asked the Director of GIDEA on the cost of the hospital, I think, you know, if I'm not mistaken, Mel, I did send you it, and these are the numbers. Are you correct? These are the numbers. Can you please, for the record, just based on what I just sent you, can you read into the record what the task force was also given regarding funding?
Sure, sure. So for, as I had mentioned earlier, I kind of, I was doing just kind of a rudimentary estimate. But GMH, assuming a 10% escalation into GMH project only, a total cost of 817 million, 817.3 million. Public health, 100 million. Guam Behavioral, 100 million. No escalation factored in. So what that means is it's actually a 90-million-building with a 10% escalation or so. And infrastructure, approximately 50 million. So a total cost of 1,067,300, less 300 million out of ARP, 767 million. Now, if we financed that over 30 years, at 5%, that would be a monthly, an annual payment of about 48, 49 million, 48.7. And then insurance and maintenance of about 25%. So an annual lease of 60 million. So we could take 10% of where we started off today.
Okay, thank you. That's much clearer for everyone to understand, you know, because it was going at 750 million, then 200 million, then 10. So I think that 990 million is really not accurate, so...
I like to estimate up as opposed to down. I generally find it safer.
Being conservative, yeah, very conservative, so I appreciate it. And I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask that the Director, please, if you could just give that to us in writing, that formula that you use, we understand it's just an average and it's an estimate, but if you could put that in writing, we'd appreciate that.
Yes, I believe, Senator, that is provided to you with the healthcare, the link that we send for the healthcare task force. I can, we can pull it out of the task force presentation, the Finance Committee.
Yeah, the calculation for the 49 million? Okay, yes, please, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. But, you know, again, I certainly appreciate all the efforts being put forth to want to build a new facility. And I thank Administrator Mendiola for pointing out we perhaps might have to proceed incrementally and move forward as what we can afford. I mean, physical infrastructure is very important. I mean, we can just use, look at our current legislature as a very good example. I mean, this building sat empty for, what, 20-plus years? I can't imagine the amount of rent we spent, not just for the main temporary building we had, but all the individual senators over the years, of course. It ultimately makes sense, and look at where we are today. And more importantly, when you need healthcare, it's critical. And I don't think anyone, as I mentioned, is going to argue about the need for a new, construction of a new GMH. But more importantly, I'm concerned about how we're going to fund that, how we're going to fund providing the medical staff that we need and the support staff, and the equipment, and the medicines, and the things that often are issues. I mean, I'm just reflecting, I have to chuckle. I mean, less than three years ago, I was sitting next to Mr. Cando and the other administrators at GMH in a very hostile, very hostile environment, and a very hostile legislature that was not as supportive of providing resources. I remember the hearse that was parked out in front of the Guam Legislature for how many days and months? Because the previous administration had requested support for GMH. So I hope moving forward that that's less an issue, and that we actually can, to the degree we can afford, and more importantly, to the degree the people of Guam can afford, to have a new hospital. But more importantly, I want to make sure that we actually have the money to fund the infrastructure within the hospital that actually provides the hands and the heart, that actually provide the service to our patients. And I think we can't lose sight of that, because that's another figure that's not represented at all in what we have discussed today. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for taking the time to come down, because I know your work is critical, Ms. Pasadas and company. Your work is probably more critical than most of us today. But thank you for taking the time collectively, and certainly to Melanie Mendiola from GIDEA, who's our star director, for coming down and providing us that information. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Thank you, folks. And we'll take a few, a five-minute recess so they can sanitize the table, and then we'll bring in the Department of Public Health. Right, bring Mr. Art Sinoccin and his staff. All right, five minutes, five-minute recess. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're back from recess. We'll begin with the next panel. We have Ms. Teresa Ariola from Guam Behavioral, Mr. Art Sinoccin, and I think it's Mr. Nicholas, correct? And, no, 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 no. I'll let Art introduce his panel after we're done with Ms. Ariola. Ms. Ariola, will you please begin with your testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators, Madam Speaker, Senators. My name is Teresa Ariola, the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. And I just want to make it loud and clear that Guam Behavioral Health supports Bill 121-36. I do not have a formal testimony in front of you today, but I will be giving oral testimony and will be providing formal written testimony within the acceptable number of days allowed. I want to, first of all, thank the good authors of the bill, Senators Joe Sinoccin and Senators Tina Munya Barnes, for coming forth and proposing a mechanism to make the reality of a healthcare campus that our island people so deserving a reality. If anything, this bill has brought to light the need to discuss true investment in our healthcare system. So as you can see, there was a lot of discussion this morning. So if anything, that objective has been met. A real discussion about a 20, state-of-the-art facilities for GMH, public health, and Guam Behavioral Health. I would be remiss if I don't recognize and thank the Leon Garrota Norio Administration for their vision and recognizing that a campus with all three health service departments is the most efficient way to deliver services to our people who is deserving of a state-of-the-art facilities. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center's current facility was built in 1992. That makes it 29 years old. That makes it 29 years old. A 52,000-square-feet facility who has, who is just busting out in the seams. For the last 16 years, two major divisions, Drug and Alcohol and Children and Adolescent Services Division, has been renting outside the Tamooning Facility, the main facility. The estimated cost of that rental is $97,000 for DNA and $137,000 for Children's and Adolescent Services annually. Multiply that by 16 years, that's how much rental monies are going to, for office space that can be reprogrammed for actual programming and for our services. Back in 1992, when the current facility was first built, the population in Guam was 136,000. Today, the latest census, 2020, is hovering at 168,000 residents. Guam Behavioral Health continues to serve and is the main mental health, drug and alcohol facility for the island. Guam Behavioral Health strongly supports being in a campus, a healthcare campus where Guam Omara Hospital and Public Health is nearby. We serve the same patients, we are the same residents, and being nearby would allow healthcare delivery to be client-centered, a model that Guam Behavioral Health completely embraces as a CARF-accredited facility. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is an active participant of the healthcare task, the Health Task Force, which many of you have heard discussions that have been ongoing. We're very active in the medical as well as the infrastructure subcommittees. I leave the financing, and I know this is a finance bill, of Mr. Chair and Senators, to Gita and the financial folks. I do, in closing, want to recommend, have, I do have a recommendation. Guam Behavioral Health is very aggressive in pursuing federal grants. Currently, we're holding over $12 million of federal grants of services that would have, if, if we didn't have these grants, we would have to fund locally. So we're very aggressive, my folks are great in writing grants. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that the bill be amended to allow for other funding streams, such as federal grants, and I know that there's been discussion about it earlier, to do so, that may be available for capital improvement projects. There was a discussion about just how many other federal grants or financial streams are available out there. I cannot give you that answer, but I'm definitely out and reaching out to Region 9 Administrator for SAMSA to find out just how the possibility or if there's grants out there for CIP funding. I can, and this is a prediction, because of COVID and mental health and behavioral health is greatly funded by the Biden Administration Rescue Plan, there's so much money coming down to address mental health. I have to believe they have also recognized the need for expansion of services because of the increase of need in the populations that the jurisdictions serve. So, I would probably put money on it that there are funds out there available for CIP funding. And so, I would definitely get back to the committee to find out if there, just what is being planned out there. There's a lot of SAMSA funding that has still not been identified, and we're still waiting to hear. But we have been given a heads-up that lots of money is coming down for mental health and behavioral health services. So, that is a homework that I will get back to you and definitely work with the Region 9 Administrator of SAMSA to, to give a bigger picture about CIP funding. But yes, we do support the bill and its intent. And again, I want to thank the authors of the bill and for all the senators who recognize that mental health and substance use disorder is very relevant and is just as equal as our, just as important as our physical health. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Before we proceed on with the other panel, I'm going to try to complete Ms. Ariola of Guam Behavioral, and I'll ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, do you have any question on Ms. Ariola?
Sure, thank you, and thank you for your testimony. And I especially appreciate your pointing out that you think it would be more efficient to be on a campus together. But my understanding is that the behavioral health, that you have put some investment into your current building and that you also have a grant to expand at the current location. And so, is it really a good idea to move and start again?
Thank you for that question, Madam Speaker. Yes, through the commitment of the administration, they have identified interior money to build a New Beginnings office space that, again, I just mentioned, is being rented. I do believe that it's still necessary to be part of a healthcare campus because what we're going through right now is not all the services need to be in the healthcare campus, but relevant services like, such as inpatient unit and of, all the other inpatient units, children's, adult inpatient, crisis stabilization unit, should be nearby where the hospital is, as well as public health. Because these, we're going to be able to better serve. Once they get their clearances, they can just walk over, and then they can, they can be admitted or get services at Guam Behavioral Health. Definitely, the Tamooning Facility will not go away, and we still, I do have plans to use those facilities for other purposes, for outpatient purposes. That doesn't necessarily need to be in the campus. So, yes, I do agree that there's still a need to be in the healthcare campus nearby. But definitely, plans for the use of the current facility will be forthcoming.
Okay, and yeah, I was going to ask for that. And then, so, can you just clarify then? You earlier pointed out the rent that's being paid for Drug and Alcohol and the Children's Services. Would those, are those considered inpatient or not?
No, those are outpatient.
Okay, so you might use your current facility for those, if those are available?
Right.
All right, thank you, Director, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Senator Mullen?
Your current facility, your parking, when you mentioned...
Parking?
Your parking, you mentioned that you're busting at the seams currently. I do drive by often, and I see, it's like cars are parked everywhere. I can imagine the difficulty there it is to find parking, not just for the employees, but I'm sure other people coming to visit and providing service. If there is expansion at, at the current building, is that also a plan for the parking?
Oh, yes, that's automatically needed to be taken into consideration as part of the plans.
Thank you very much. No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do want to ask Ms. Ariola, and certainly in follow-up to what Speaker Terlahe had asked. I mean, I ideally would love to have all these things that are all at a beautiful campus and laid out, and, you know, we can enjoy all that. But I think the reality is, I mean, do we have the finances to do it? And I think that's the bottom line. It would be nice to all be connected in one campus, but I think it's quite possible, as we have for many years operated, even though you are adjacent to GMH, but, you know, Public Health's main office is up in Mangillo, it's been there since the early '70s. If that's not feasible, what other, I mean, if you're, you're, you're spending $100,000 for rent for additional space, I mean, couldn't that be looked at to finance to your existing facility and add on there? Do you have the space to do that?
Very little space. I mean, currently, the plans for the New Beginning Building is going to knock down the current, if you've been, I mean, I'm sure you've seen the big pavilion in the front.
Yes.
So that's where the, the, the construction of the New Beginnings Office Building will be. To the right of the building, there's just not too much space. There's a ravine, and that, that's it. That's the size of our footprint.
But you're back parking lot. I mean, you could always build a structure there, couldn't you? Or parking structure with additional... You know, I would love to live in an ideal world, but I know we don't live in one, and we don't have the endless finances at a time of trying to get out of this pandemic with uncertain economic future ahead of us and how long that's going to be to, to want to put all this in place. I, I appreciate the vision of the administration, the desire of the administration to want to do all these things, but is it financially feasible? I mean, you talk about this building built in 1992, and I go, gosh, to be 29 again, I'd love to be 29 again. But I think this idea in government that, oh, my gosh, after 30 or 40 years, we're going to have to demolish our, our buildings and build all over again before we barely finish paying the last bond payment. Many people live in homes that are over 30, 40 years old. You want to have the opportunity that you're not making an extended payment to actually have a moment to breathe and be able to enjoy that space. So while I, I understand your point, yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at the realities of where we're at financially. If we're not able to afford a single campus, that we have yet to identify for sure whether or not that property is available, or do we have to purchase it, or do we have to pay an original landowner? And we're not even sure, just looking at the figures for the hospital, looking at how much that potentially is going to cost, can we afford to build all these additional facilities in an adjacent complex? So I'm trying to look at what's feasible with where you're at now with an existing structure that has been paid for by the people of Guam. What, to the degree beyond the New Beginnings, can you look at in your plans? If, if that is the reality, and how can you expand to still meet your needs? Because I'm sure you'll probably come back and tell me you don't have enough personnel or resources to execute all the mandates that exist in your department. So I, I'm just looking at it from a practical standpoint because there's not an endless fund of money. And I don't necessarily want to keep indebted, you know, our grandchildren that have yet to be born yet, to still pay for facilities 30 or 40 years from now, we're going to say are deteriorating, and, and we got to buy a new one and build a new one.
Well, I appreciate that, Senator. And as I mentioned to Speaker Terlahe, the current facility will not be demolished, as you've stated. It would be reused and repurposed.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. I don't like words being put in my mouth. I never meant, said the word demolish once.
Okay, I, I think you said not used or, or knocked down, whatever the word. I just, for, for clarity, the current space would not be left unused. It would be currently used. There is a plan, we're putting together a plan of what, what services can be stay, can stay in the Tamooning area and not necessarily go to the main campus. So, you may not have used the word demolish, but you did say knocked down? I think that's the word you used.
I don't recall referencing knocking down the building at all.
Okay, just for clarity, then, for, for clarity's sake, the current facility, even though we envision and we would love to be in the current campus, the vision campus, will not be unused. It will be used for other things, for other outpatient services.
Well, what if they, what if the numbers, what if the numbers come back that, that show it's, you know, we could barely finance the hospital itself? I'm asking you what, what contingency plans, or what, I shouldn't even say contingency. What are the plans you would have otherwise if, if you're not part of this potential complex that's being proposed here? To, to still be able to address your operations with your existing facility and your existing land footprint that you have?
Well, we would have to look into it. And, you know, baby steps, and that's the reason why we're building New Beginnings Building. Because, as you know, the Drug and Alcohol services are so well-needed. I mean, we're busting out the seams in the current rental. So, you know, we have had the vision to build a current, to own our own New Beginnings Building. And so, that's definitely going to take up the lawn space or the pavilion space. I'm just saying we don't have a lot of space. I guess we can go up. I have to look at the possibility of building up. I mean, you know, we can always look at those possibilities. To the right of the, if you're looking at the current facility to the right, there's a ravine. Barely, I would say, 10 feet out is the property line. So there really is no space on the right side. Probably can build a very thin, tall parking structure, maybe. But definitely, it would be to go up. If we're taking the space on the, the only space available, which is the pavilion front lawn along the road for the New Beginnings Building. Currently, there is no other space other than adding an additional floor.
Well, I mean, if we assume that the, if the existing hospital now is relocated, rebuilt elsewhere, then that's another option of property available, or the facility. Because I'm sure we're going to have to decide what to do with the existing building. While it might not be ideally functional for a current modern hospital, there might be other uses, including expansion of your existing facility. Is that something you guys maybe also theoretically? Because at this point, nothing's determined yet. But is that something you could also look at as, as a feasibility?
It's also very possible, but I wouldn't, unfortunately, you know, we would have to look at the investment of refurbishing that and reconfiguring that property.
Yeah, I, I don't see, I don't envision that whole facility being used just for mental health. I mean, it's a sizable facility and the maintenance. I'm just, I'm just also looking at possible reconfiguration or of the existing property parking lot that could be, you know, changed? Like the, like the GMH parking lot that's adjacent to you, that's across the street from the main facility?
Right.
I mean, those are things maybe that can be looked at, or parking structures that can be built to accommodate parking, but then still look at alternate uses of the building or build on those areas with additional parking. I'm just putting it up because I, I don't, I don't...
Absolutely, Senator, they're all possibilities.
I just don't want to live in La La Land. I would like all this, but I don't even know if we're going to make the fiscal year obligation for 2022. I don't know that. Outside of Uncle Sam's generosity at this point, I don't know that. So, it's, it's hard for me to want to look at all this, and I know we've got all this federal funds, and we were throwing $20,000 here and $20,000 there and everywhere. But this is very short-term, and, and the long-term prognosis right now, I don't know. I don't know what that crystal ball is going to propose. So, I think these are all great ideas, and I think we'd love to all see it. But do we have the, you know, can the people of Guam afford all the government we want to give them at this time? So I, I'm just pointing that out as, as an option of what, what else can be looked at aside from this desired facility?
I recognize your concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Ms. Ariola?
Yes.
Just a simple question. Earlier, Mel brought up that approximately for your, for your facility and Public Health, would it be combined about $200 million? If you were part of the campus, based on this bill, what are we looking at, possible estimate for you? Because you're, you're going to maintain your same facilities today. It's just to be part of the campus. Would you estimate that your, if, if you were, if this bill was to pass, that you could probably, roughly cost maybe 50? Less than $100 million for sure, I know that. But I know Public Health needs a major building.
Yes, yes. As much as I would like to be recognized as an equal partner, I will yield to our homeless Public Health to first... Because they really don't have a home, they're all over the place. So, you know, the expansions of, the expansion of the inpatient unit is really necessary. We are always at a high level of 16 beds or more. So there's a need for that. There's also a need for a higher level of care. You know, we don't have a forensic hospital or a psychiatric hospital, but maybe a, a small number of beds of a psychiatric hospital is, is definitely needed. So the levels of care for inpatient unit is very necessary. Well, the expansion of it. You know, so, I, I, is, is that what you were asking? Like, what are the plans?
No, no, trying to look at what is the possible cost? Are we looking at maybe a $20 million or $15 million building? Is what you need? I mean, how much did your building today cost? Do you remember what it cost then? I know it's, it's not as much as...
Well, 29 years ago, I'm not sure. I'm, how much investment? I'm sure the legislature at the time built that building. I can get that information. But all I know is that the, the need to be, because we have shared the same residents that service the hospital, that service Guam Behavioral Health, that service Public Health, especially Public Health. I, I just have to say that most of our patients go, are Public Health clients, and, and then they come to us. Again, I talked about client-centered, right? So, it's very difficult, if we were all in one campus... If we were all in one campus, and I recognize that that is the dream, but we got to start somewhere, right, for discussion? And that's why I appreciate this bill being introduced. We have a lot of patients that, you know, going around the island is not feasible. It would be nice if they can go see their clinic at public health and then come over to Guam Behavioral Health for their appointments, and if necessary, go to, for GMH, for whatever needs they have, services. Part of the campus that wasn't discussed also is the shared resources that can be shared by all three. For example, training rooms, meeting rooms, administrative building, pharmacy is a possibility, you know? So there's common things on all three that we could definitely work out on what we can share. I mean, why, you know, Guam Behavioral Health has a floor for admin. They have office space for admin. GMH has admin. Why couldn't we be in one admin building and everybody in admin for all three healthcare? You know, and again, I appreciate the senator's concerns about, you know, the cost, but there are benefits of being nearby one another. It's just how do we design it and how do we make it so it can work for everyone, for all three entities to live together and share the common areas that can be shared? I don't have a estimate. I know that Gita and I spoke briefly, and we were looking at $100,000 for myself, $100,000 for public health. And then, you know, really, the big ticket item is, is the hospital.
Correct. All right, no problem. Thank you. Because I know that when we get into the details from Gita and public health, we'll know basically what the requirement, because Mel, Ms. Mendeola, did bring up about $200 million?
For both.
For both. So if the bulk is going to be public health, then I'm going to estimate, I'm just throwing the numbers out, but about $50 million would be just for you, because you're going to maintain the rest of your facilities?
And use it.
You basically just need to open up, and because of the joint sharing with the public health and GMH, everything will just go down in cost. I honestly believe in that. But thank you anyways, Ms. Ariola, for your participation today. And you can now leave.
I thank you. And if there are no other questions from the senators who are present, I appreciate that you stayed back for our testimony.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, senators.
Thank you. And I'll have the Sergeant Arms go ahead and sanitize her area. We can bring in the new public health staff. But we'll begin with Mr. Sanogstein. Art, please. And if you can introduce your staff, we have one more coming in.
All right, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Senator Sanogstein. Speaker Terlaihi and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, members of the 36 Guam Legislature, good afternoon. My name is Arthur Sanogstein, and I am the director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And with me this afternoon, I have my team from Public Health and Social Services here. Some with me this, here in the public hearing room and some outside. Should you be able, or should we need to call them to provide any additional testimony or provide clarification? So with me this morning, to my immediate right is Tashk Archangel. She's our chief public welfare administrator. To her immediate right is Chima Mbakwem. He is our acting chief public health officer. And to his immediate right is Malu Merelu Scroggs. She is the acting chief public health environmental officer. Outside with us this morning or this afternoon, I also have Bertha Tyrone from the general administration office of the director's office. I have Tommy Titigui, also from the general administration fiscal business office of the director's office. And I have also Charlene Sanicolas, the acting senior citizens administrator. And my two deputies are with me, Deputy Terriuggan and Deputy Lawrence Duñez.
Hafa Day, Senator Joe Sanogstein, and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing. As the lead agency responsible for major public health emergencies, with the one on September 2019, our Danggi outbreak, and March 2020, our SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19, DPHSS welcomes Bill 12136 to provide funding to build Guam's 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence. Of equal note is DPHSS is also responsible for environmental, welfare and aging services. Further, this measure supports the commitment of Governor Lillian Grohl to build a new hospital, complemented with the plan to build a new public health and social services in Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center facilities. The establishment of a 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence building will absolutely benefit DPHSS and, more importantly, the people of Guam and the region. The partnership among the three governor of Guam agencies, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Guam Memorial Hospital, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, will provide a more holistic, coordinated and comprehensive approach in providing health, social, environmental and welfare services to the people of Guam. The construction of the healthcare of excellence facilities is a long overdue undertaking for the people of Guam. DPHSS supports their inclusion as one of the three agencies to be part of the healthcare facilities. For years, the obvious need for structural development and growth has gone unattended, and therefore, DPHSS extends its gratitude to the sponsors of this measure, who have identified a means to build the physical structure for Guam's healthcare system. It is time for us to invest in our future, to provide the state-of-the-art facilities for agencies that care for our people, to work towards a healthcare system that promotes access, affordability and efficiency. On our behalf, the late evening of November 26, 2019, an electrical fire took place at the central public health building in Mingila. The building was deemed unsafe by the Guam Fire Department, and the employees working at the Mingila facility had no choice but to temporarily suspend services and pack up their work belongings to an alternate worksite. The move required the relocation of large volumes of files, documents, supplies, furniture, computer equipment, vital records, personal health records and other work-related items. The central public health services were temporarily suspended as staff focused on packing and relocating their belongings from a two-story building with no windows and what's over 75,000 square feet. In support of the dire situation the Department of Public Health and Social Services was in, the Governor of Guam declared a state of emergency at public health. The electrical fire was a final red flag as many efforts remained to maintain the aging structure, while recognizing that even before the electrical fire incident, DPHSS outgrew the approximately 48-year-old building, both in the number of staff that needed to be housed in the facility and the increasing number of people accessing services at this centrally located facility. Interestingly, the original tent of the former central public health facility was built as a fallout shelter. While the measure lays out the administrative means to support the construction and maintenance of the tri-agency facilities, it further paves the way for the healthcare agencies to start planning the construction, design, redesign and placement of their programs and services to serve the people of Guam. DPHSS supports the tri-agencies being co-located, as DPHSS views this as a strength in coordinating services, increasing access to the clients we serve while promoting efficiency within its respective operations and between and among the healthcare agencies. By centralizing public health and social services, behavioral health and our hospital, we will be prepared for the future demands placed on the healthcare agencies, as the three agencies will be able to deliver health and social welfare services in a more holistic way. Currently, the Division of Public Welfare is leasing more than 30,500 square feet of office space in different locations, which costs the programs more than $955,000 per year. This money can be effectively redirected and utilized to pay for other investments like direct client services rather than paying for lease. The Division of Public Welfare administers a supplemental nutrition assistance program, Medicaid program, medically indigent program, cash assistance program, CHAPF Development Fund and the Title 20 Child Welfare Services. The programs provide services and benefits to more than 60,000 vulnerable people, which are approximately one-third of Guam's population. The passage of this bill is a monumental step that will create a significant improvement in the management and delivery of DPW programs, services by directing people to a one-stop location to seamlessly obtain access, the welfare services that are necessary to promote and sustain healthier lifestyles. The Division of Senior Citizens administers a multitude of services such as protection and advocacy through the Adult Protective Services for persons with disability, 18 to 59, and elderly 60 years and older who have been abused and/or neglected. Medicare Assistance Counseling and Elder Justice Centers Legal Assistance Services that promote and protect seniors to age in place. The Division is earmarked to expand $213,771.60 per year for office space with a rental agreement in place for 60 months or five years will expand $1,068,858,000. These funds could be redirected to support the facility. In fiscal year 2021, DPHSS anticipates to expand $2,073,192,000 in office lease rental. The Division of Environmental Health is tasked to provide annual health and safety training to nearly 30,000 individuals, obtaining a health certificate from the division. DEH conducts a training course twice daily. In total, about 750 individuals are trained weekly, and all are applicants seeking a health certificate in the food category. Because of limited space and number of instructors, DEH has yet to expand the training course to health certificate, health certificate applicants in other categories, such as institutional facilities, laundry, dry cleaning, hotel motel and cosmetic establishments. Consequently, applicants that are being trained must usually wait approximately two or more weeks to take the course. To timely accommodate all 30,000-plus applicants every year and to reduce the frequency of the course, DEH requires a larger venue site. Once built, Division of Environmental Health, Health Certificate clients will be able to obtain a PPD skin test and even a chest X-ray and clearance from the Division of Public Health TV section in the same facility without having to drive to another location. This helps improve our ability to provide improved customer service. DEH staff is tasked to conduct investigations of foodborne illnesses and vector borne diseases will be able to coordinate with DPH's Office of Epidemiology and the Bureau of Communicable Disease Control for improved coordinated response. The Division of Public Health is faced with a challenge of providing adequate services for Guam population due to structural accommodation. It is worthy to note that after the electrical fire at the Mingila facility in 2019, several programs of the department became homeless and even, and have been scattered to various locations, thereby making service accessibility an issue. Programs that complement each other with partner services are housed in different locations, currently making it difficult for the customer to access timely service and patient care. The need to construct a new building cannot be overemphasized. The physical environment in which care is delivered should have patient safety, efficient and effective service delivery in place. There is also the need to create a truly therapeutic environment for people seeking care and support, which is presently lacking in our current situation. A new building will create a safe, supportive environment that is vital to address the public's expectation and demands of the department. Constructing a new building will contribute to the centralization of services, promotion of health and prevention of diseases most especially, by creating a safe environment for customers. A new building designed in a manner to reduce the risk of infection of customers is important to reduce healthcare associated infection. Overall benefits of the new DPHSS building will foster strengthening and transforming the public health and social services system, increasing access to healthcare services, inclusive of social and welfare services, increasing day-to-day surveillance for emerging infectious diseases that may impact public health protection and promotion, increasing partner services for programs that depend on each other for service delivery, the sharing of resources that could decrease fiscal expenses, such as increased coordination of pharmacy services and fiscal services, opportunities to design and implement new services and refine existing program services, improved coordination for protection and advocacy efforts of child and adult abuse, improving access to community support services, greater access to program administration and development, exploring possibility of personnel recruitment to be performed by GMHA. We have a few recommendations for consideration to Bill 12136. Under Section 83111, Hospital IT and Building Management System, let the measure be further reviewed for IT development to reflect the inclusion of the two other agencies, DPHSS and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, in its specifications. Further, in the same section, letter B, requiring all software systems to be designed by the same developer may pose a challenge in securing a successful vendor. Perhaps this provision could be stated. It is required that a single software developer be sought. However, if it is evident that there requires more than one software developer be engaged, this would require justification to be provided to the Office of Technology for their review and approval. Under Section 83112, it be expanded to include janitorial services and trash collection and that all fixed assets be included as part of the design, construction, service and maintenance. The measure being, and also includes that the measure be a legal framework of policy for the three agencies, and therefore, the measure not be agency-specific in areas that all three agencies would benefit from, and instead be stated for all healthcare agencies applicable or needed. Also, to clarify the intent on the rules of agencies identified in 83114 and the creation of rules and regulations, and finally, to have language to be included to ensure that the construction, maintenance and repair of the facility is not restricted to the revenue identified in the bill. Use of other funds should be allowed to be used for the facility, including but not limited to USDA loans, federal grants and other financing options. By creating this 21st Century Healthcare, Healthcare Center of Excellence, DPHSS, along with its partner agencies, will be better equipped to respond to public health emergencies, ensure services are available to our people who need them and ensure access to healthcare. Furthermore, the integration of GMHA, GBHWC and DPHSS will definitely provide a single location where people can receive most of their important needs in health and social welfare services, striving to achieve greater customer convenience. Finally, the benefits of aligning the three agencies will result in strengthened infrastructure across systems and an improved ability to address priority health and welfare problems more efficiently. The construction of the Governor of Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence will benefit the entire island. We fully support the passage of Bill 12136 and urge the members of the 36 Guam Legislature to do the same. Don't go unless you're Zosmas, on behalf of the management and leadership of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanogstein, Director. I'd ask, I don't know if your staff would like to testify, but you pretty much wrapped it all up. Maybe my colleagues would like to ask questions of your staff and yourself. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Sanogstein, and to all of you who are here and outside the hall as well, who are here to support this request. I fully support public health's request and your argument that you have made as to why a consolidated facility for public health is in order and overdue, and how that would make, be convenient for the clients and the patients that you serve. So I have no, no issue with that. We should work on that as soon as possible. I have a question as to, I want you to explain more. You have some general statements in here, but please explain as much as you can, and even after this hearing, if you could prove to us why public health has to be close to the hospital? Because that's going to change a lot of things. And, you know, it really limits our planning for your facility. It might delay you getting a new facility, because we have to coordinate the three facilities as opposed to, you know, buckling down and using all our efforts to build you a facility.
Sure. Madam Speaker, to your, to your point, I guess as we engage in this concept of a medical campus, my thought and my hope was that we would have a master plan and that they would be in phases. And as funding is identified, perhaps the priority would, I hope, be shifted to public health and social services, as Therese, the director of Gitwick, has very eloquently stated, many of our offices are somewhat homeless. And we're not homeless on the street, but we don't have an official building. We are renting, we're renters at this time, many of our programs, and we're trying to fit as many people into the office space as possible. And so the advantage really of having the facilities through the, just practice of knowing what we do at public health and social services, the clients we serve, being close to the hospital has really a lot of benefits, not only sharing of resources like pharmacy, maybe HR, maybe in fiscal teams coming together, but also in terms of coordination of care of services. If we prevent them from readmission or admission, then we're doing a really good job. And so if they are in the hospital, what has come to mind really many times over, Madam Speaker, is a holistic approach of not just the medical model, but the social worker, social service model, working as one effort. Because, yes, you see your physicians, and they may go through a procedure, and they give you discharge instructions, but what public health brings to the table... you discharge instructions, but what public health brings to the table is knowing that patient and being able to track the home cure that needs to be done, so in hopes that the patient will maintain their regimen in terms of what the discharge plan is, and hopes also that by doing so, there is no readmission. And there's a lot of benefit in terms of us working together from a medical standpoint and a public health and social service standpoint. We also see it as an opportunity, because we have a lab, we won't have a Guam Public Health Lab there, they have a lab, we're looking at maybe sharing a medical director, and we're looking at that as a possibility. We're also looking at our site to be also an opportunity for our neighbors in our neighboring region, like I'm a member of the Pacific Island Health Officers Association, Pihua, and by being a member there, I'm able to network with other island nations. And so, really, in talking with them about this public health facility and building something new even in the lab, we're looking at training opportunity, maybe Guam could be the area for labs to be, lab tests to be performed that are not being done at the neighboring islands. And also, we've been talking already about training the internet process. And so, that though is with our neighboring islands, I understand that, but that really also can play into training between our nursing teams, because you have the hospital, we have us, and so, there's a possibility that when we're short, we can reach to them, when they're short, they could reach to us. If they have a crisis and they say, hey, you know, for now, it's Lilian and I, Lilian says, hey, Art, you know, we have a situation that requires more nursing team, can you please help us and respond? We need this for three days. It's like, okay, then I can call the Division of Public Health, today it's Chima Mbakwe, and say, hey, I need the nursing team out there, they just need it for three days, we've got to put a press release out, there's a situation on Guam that requires our nursing support and we need to help the people in Guam right now for three days. And this is just an example, hypothetical. So, there's that sharing of resource proximity, and if you go from public health to admission or from admission to discharge, public health can be there to help you with the discharge aspect of your patient care. And then, you know, with regards to, and many of you know, with regards to affordability, Tessa and her team being so close to the hospital could work with the hospital very closely in terms of reviewing applications for MIP or Medicaid, and we can work with their social worker, their social work team, and now that that can't exist today, I understand, but just being that much closer, we can really just walk across the street, or I don't know if we're going to drive across the street, or walk across the street, or there's going to be a tunnel, I don't know what the design is going to look like yet, but just the accessibility that we can walk across and call each other, hey, I've got a patient that needs this, can we send someone here? And so, maybe she'll have a team that can just be assigned to assist the hospital patients from our own civilian hospital. So, just kind of thinking how we could improve services for the experience of the patient and not have to be told, okay, now you're done with here, you got to go to this other location, get your applications, come back. And so, that would just be a nice, really convenient way to do business on Guam for our patients who access our services.
All right, well, I appreciate those ideas as to how the, you know, it might benefit patients to be closer. If you could, I would ask, Mr. Chair, if those could be put in writing, because I think, you know, if they're not in your current methods of operation or your current even state plans as to your goals, right, that you needed to be that close to the hospital in order, you know, for tests to have increased efficiencies over their claims, you know, we're going to balance that with the potential increased costs. I mean, we're talking about efficiency perhaps, but not really concrete, right? And I want to see those to be concrete because there will be huge infrastructure costs the way the plans are going in putting these all together in one location, and your needs, I think, should be addressed as soon as possible. And because they're much less in cost than the hospital, like, for example, Greta gave an estimate of $100 million, you know, they could take care of that immediately as opposed to waiting for, you know, how we're going to finance $900 million, things like that. And so, for example, you described sharing a lab as a potential, but it's not really been the plan. Like, when you applied for the money for the lab, that was never the plan that you needed to share that with the hospital, or it was never the plan that, you know, it's great if we're going to have our social workers, you know, there, I think, if that's what you're describing, but really, the plan for public health has been to get public health out to the community. It's in contrast to the hospital, it's been create these community centers so that they will be serviced, you know, out there. And of course, you had your main facility with a lot of the admin, and I agree, I'm telling you, I want that to be together. I can see the efficiencies of that. I just think that in trying to force this public health facility to be built together with the hospital, which is just a huge project in and of itself, might delay you in getting your combined facility. And, so, yes, I would like that to be, you know, so you did a great job in explaining why you need to be together in one facility, but I would like that same effort made to explain, you know, the general explanation you said that this is going to increase, you know, for the benefit of the client, I would like you to put that in writing as how really the public health is going to benefit the client. And then, one more question is, we were told that the current facility in Mingila, which of course you couldn't fit in the first place, it was too small, but then, you know, the fire, but we were told it's unusable. But I went to some other meeting and I can't remember where right now, but where it was, they were speculating on use of that building or that facility, like revamping it and making use of it. So, I want to know what you have, have there been studies, what, you know, when the fire department said you had to get out, I understand that, and with the current situation, it's not usable. But has there been any study or anything in writing made as to the potential use of salvaging it?
Speaker, Madam Speaker, I will have to go back to the file on this and review it, and then I can provide you a response after today's hearing. They did have a conversation months ago, and we're looking at exploring how we could reuse the Central Public Health Facility. We have some projects on the radar that may need property, like the Guam Public Health Lab, so I'm not going to get any feedback until June on that. Now, that's federally funded, and so, we're looking at that site as a possible location for this lab that...
Oh, that's right. That's where that came up. It was during an oversight hearing where you mentioned that there's the possible use of this building. So, I would like to flush that out. I think, you know, you're looking at the legislature, you want us to approve that this has to be together with the hospital and it has to be done this way at this cost, and I would like to see that we have, you know, looked at all avenues, all options, I know, you know, I want you to give us the best options and all options if you can. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Directors, and thank you, all of you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And yes, Art, please give us in writing, I appreciate it.
Noted, sir.
Thank you. Senator, do you have any questions to the panel?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have questions, but I certainly appreciate the time and effort that was put into Mr. Sinocine's testimony and having his staff here to express support for their desire for a new facility. But I also kind of concur with the position the speaker has taken. I think we'd all love convenience, but the question is, can we afford it? How is that going to delay the possibility in the closer near-term future view actually getting a facility built? And in this day of modern technology, the fact that we're able to meet online without even having to see each other, you know, this pandemic has certainly brought to light that those options are available, and how can we work around that? If we are not able to address at this time financing a facility to be constructed in this new complex, certainly I'd like to hear in the future what alternate options are available to provide you a facility where you can operate, where you're not renting, especially government agencies that we know we're always going to need. I'm not, never comfortable with the continued renting if we have the land and we can finance that rental money into actually building you a tangible facility that you can operate out of. This is a wonderful idea, I've got no objection to it, I'm very supportive of it, but the reality is, do we have the money to finance it? And how many years are we talking down the road? Maybe this might be something that can be added down the future when we have more debt obligations paid down and there's additional movement and space there to finance other projects such as this, to keep those options open, but I, after listening to the hearing today, I don't know how feasible it is at this time to do all this, but I think we certainly like to hear in the future what other alternative actions are available so that you actually can get a facility you can properly operate out of. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to comment here today on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Mr. Sinocine, I think you heard me earlier, I asked a question of behavioral, but I also asked Ms. Mendola earlier about the cost. We started with GMH with like $750, $200 million total for public health and behavioral. I'm just curious, do you know a rough estimate? Are you looking at maybe $150 million building or less?
You know, I wish I could tell you that I have a number in mind, I don't at this time. We're sitting as part of the task group working on this, and so, there isn't a number yet, except what Mel has provided, the estimate of $100 million. So, I don't have a number that I can offer you other than what Mel has already kind of shared with the legislative body earlier today.
All right, yeah, and the reason why I ask that question is because as the bill identifies all three health agencies, I've also alluded to that number one, if we focus the $35 million a year for public health and we get the governor to give the $200 million that, or the $200 million that the legislature proposed, she wants $300 million from the ARP to take care of the hospital, we can do two folds. Fund the GMH with the $35 million, the governor pays upfront the ARP money, because it takes more than a year to build a building, we all know that. But you can earmark that money in three years, and because we do have a letter of support from the folks that build, the high schools, the Guam Education Finance Foundation, and they're in full support of the public-private partnership, and they're good at building buildings. They just need to know what they need for public health or behavioral, but they've had built, these type of construction companies are known for building hospital. So, whatever they need to do, I think if this bill was to pass or to be put on the table, at least the folks that are interested in, you could probably have your building built even faster than GMH because of the ARP funding. A lot of things can happen, Mr. Sinocine, I just wanted to address that, and I thank you all and for your staff. Unless you want any of your staff to come in and participate, I think you've spoken quite elegantly and appreciate your testimony, and if we can just get the additional writing information, we would appreciate it.
Yes, Senator Sinocine, I'll definitely do that point to bring back to that information to the body in terms of the speaker's request.
Yes, please, I appreciate it. That being said, there is no one else to testify on Bill 121. I'll give my closing. Thank you to my colleagues and for those present today. The passage of Bill 121-COR, 21-36-COR, will help the government of Guam healthcare agencies to have permanent, modern, improved, and safer facilities for the people in Guam and the Micronesian region, and the importance to have quality healthcare service and facilities. Bill 121-36-COR is essential as our healthcare agencies are in dire need of new facilities that will inflict, that will not inflict harm to the staff, patients, and visitors, and not risk accreditation status, Medicare and Medicaid eligibility. I ask my colleagues for their support on this bill, and I look forward to seeing 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence rise and provide our people of Guam the best quality care. So, do a smart seat for all your participation, the people of Guam. The committee will continue to receive testimony, please address your in testimony, the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and submitted via email to Senator Joe S. Sinocine@gmail.com and to my, or to my office located at Rand Care Building, same building with public health, the second floor, Suite 3, 761 Submarine Corps Drive, the Mooning Guam 9691. Sis Zosmasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing, and for those at home, thank you for watching. This public hearing on Bill 121-36-COR is now adjourned, it is 11, correction, 12:37. Thank you, please be safe, stay safe, take care.